Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this irregular meeting Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's good to see you all here this morning. We have a long agenda. We're going to get started after we do the invocation and pledge. We do have a swearing-in ceremony this morning. If you would, let's rise and do the invocation. Commissioner Ward.
Lord, we come to you today as we gather and do county business. We pray for everybody in the community that's sick or just need the touch of your hand, Lord. We pray for our new commissioner as he takes his seat today and his family and friends. We also pray for our community, Lord, and we pray that you will allow everybody to have a great holiday season and a Merry Christmas, in addition to a happy birthday to you and your holy name. Amen.
Fledgely witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judge, I turn it over to you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before he takes his seat, would you like him to bring his family up?
Yes. Commissioner, before you take your seat, if you want to bring your family up and take a picture or do anything like that, now you have time to do that.
Welcome, Commissioner Crone.
Time to go to work.
All right, Mr. Chairman, he's on the clock.
All right, let's get moving then. Are there any additions to the agenda other than what has been advertised?
No additions, but I will tell you that you know that Erin Griffith is out of place on the agenda. That's because she has a meeting with FEMA this morning about the access road and the wall that it failed. And you know it's next to impossible to reschedule a meeting with FEMA, so she's going to give her report and she's going to be on her way. So that's why she's there. And just in case anybody was watching, we did, Erin and I worked pretty late last night. There were some technical issues, so her, there was an updated report for her that we uploaded to the, I uploaded to the website, to the agenda, I'm sorry, yesterday. And that report is in front of you and there are copies in the back next to the agenda. So just so everyone's aware, there's an updated agenda, I mean, updated report from Ms. Griffith.
Okay, so I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Amen.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. The next order of business is approval of minutes of payment of county bills.
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Mr. Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes unanimously. All right, Ms. Griffith, we're up to you.
Okay, Commissioners, the first item on my board report, the engineering service contract with Dewberry Engineers. This item is actually going to be delayed until the next meeting because it is still in legal review with Dewberry's team. So once we have a final contract between all parties, then that will come back to you all. But we were hoping that it would be out of legal review by today, but it's not. Next item is item number two, Board Action CR sixty-seven Phase Two project, and I have multiple action items for this one particular project. At the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, the board signed the one million nine hundred seventy thousand fifty-dollar grant award agreement for the design permitting and construction of approximately two miles of CR sixty-seven from the Crooked River Bridge to SFR one sixty-six. In December of two thousand and twenty-two, the county went and advertised for construction bids, and unfortunately, as it was originally designed and permitted, the bids came in too high and FDOT was not able to obligate any additional funds for the project at the time. The project went back through the engineering and design process, and a second bid package was advertised, which included alternate bid items, which included no paved shoulders, two-foot paved shoulders, one-foot paved shoulders, et cetera, to try to get the project within budget. When construction bids were open for the second time in late November, even the low bid, which was for more than the approximate two-mile section of road with no paved shoulders, was still over the construction award amount, which was one million six hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred fifty dollars after the design and CEI for the original grant award. After a lengthy negotiation process, FDOT has finally agreed to provide an additional seventy-two thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars to fund the original length of the project without paved shoulders. Action item A, Board Action to approve and adopt the attached resolution of authorization for the chairman to sign the attached supplemental award agreement.
Pleasure to the board.
Amen.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next action item for the same subject is Commissioner Sanders has been closely following this project, and she wants to be sure that the high-speed, high-traffic road is as safe as possible. And as FDOT does not have the funds to pay for a paved shoulder, she has agreed to obligate an additional ninety-five thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents from her district's paving funds to construct a one-foot paved shoulder on either side of the travel lanes. Board Action to obligate an additional ninety-five thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents from District Two's paving funds towards the cost of the one foot of paved shoulders at the edge of the travel lanes.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
I do. I've got one thing. The reason why I'm doing that, too, is not only is it a high-traffic area, but it's an evacuation ramp, which is, in reality, all of our roads coming in and out of Franklin County are evacuation ramps. So that's the reason why I'm obligating to you all to do that ninety-five thousand out of District Two paving funds, because it's the evacuation ramp I'll start.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, as the project is now moving forward, the one hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-dollar contract for CEI services, we actually went through negotiations with this firm back in December of two thousand and twenty-two. Southeastern Consulting Engineers can now be executed. Board Action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached CEI contract with Southeastern Consulting Engineers for the CR sixty-seven Phase Two project.
Amen.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, Commissioner? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Griffith, do we need to go back to number six?
I did miss that. I was looking for it. Did I just skip that one?
You did.
Okay, yeah. And then, let's see, also, as the project is now fully funded, the base bid with deductive bid alternate number one in the amount of one million eight hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-six cents can be awarded to low bidder Robertson Roberts as recommended by Dewberry Engineers. Board Action to issue the notice of award and sign the contract once available with Robertson Roberts.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Next item is item number three, Board Action and No-Cost Time Extension for CR sixty-seven Willmack Creek Project. We have a lot of work going on CR sixty-seven right now, and hopefully, that road will be entirely complete within the next year or so. Engineers have submitted a no-cost time extension to grant an additional forty-five days due to rain and storms to the contractor for the completion of the CR sixty-seven Willmack Creek Bridge repairs project. Board Action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached no-cost time extension.
So move. With questions?
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Do we have a second?
Second. Well, I'll say.
We have two seconds. Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Amison. Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
So I do understand we've had a lot of rain, Erin, but did they give you a timeline as to when they would, I know, implement whether they can't figure that out, but, or know that, but...
They're thinking mid-February at this point.
Okay.
Long time. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not happy with this at all. They have done a shabby job so far. They're still on one lane. They started this, what, three months ago, and now they want to blame the rain when they had all the sunshiny days before. They had the rain. And like I said, I'm not liking that job. This is causing a traffic hazard up there, and I told y'all it was going to come, didn't I, David? And the rains came. And so what it did is that section, and I want to thank the sheriff for helping us and the road department for helping us keep it patrolled, but there's been almost, well, there had been one accident, and there was two more possible, and then we put some more signs out. We tell them it's water over the road. They don't want to listen to us, and the guy says, "Oh, do you know all that water coming down this little branch right here?" It knocked down the sheet metal piling. I said, "Man, this is a main tributary, the Clokken River," and said, "That's what we're dealing with." Let me make you aware of something. Sunday, Monday, I hate to say it because it's Christmas, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, it's supposed to rain again. So we've got problems again. And I'm just not sure, I want y'all to stay on top of this, because I'm not sure that they put the slip liners in the, I was trying to think of the words, slip liners in the coves. And if that's the case, we, the road department of the county could have done what they're doing. You know what I mean? So anyway, I just want the chairman and the board aware of this. This is not a good thing. And if it comes out that we have to rate them at the end of this project, I won't be sitting on that committee, because, I mean, they have not done as well in there. I'm not happy at all. All you got to do is write up sixty-seven and say, "Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the comment."
No problem. Ms. Gady, we did have a motion and second, didn't we?
Yes.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed.
Okay, action item number four. In late twenty eighteen, the board received an FWC grant to design and permit the replacement of the existing single-lane boat ramp at the west end of Old Ferry Dock Road, which had been constructed in nineteen eighty-five with two twenty-foot-wide ramps with a loading dock. Also included in the design and permitting process was an expansion of the boat basin with a new concrete wall to make the ramp more navigable. The final permits and designs were approved by FWC and the Army Corps in two thousand and twenty-two, and the county submitted the construction funding application thereafter, and just last week received the attached construction grant award agreement for one million four hundred eighty thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Board Action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached construction grant award agreement for the Old Ferry Dock Boat Ramp Project.
Amen.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? By way of discussion, I would like to highlight for the public, just so they know, it took, according to what the narrative here is, and it is the truth, it was four years to get the design and permit done. Four years. And now we've been waiting over a year to get the award agreement. We're moving forward, but I think a lot of people think we're not working on stuff, but we are. But it's difficult when you're working in conjunction with other agencies, state or federal. That's all I want to say. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Right, Commissioners, next item is number five. At the last meeting, bids for the SGI Parking Improvements Project were opened and released to Dewberry Engineers for their review. The engineers recommended awards to the low bidder, the GeoFlora Group LLC, in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand seventy-one dollars and eighty cents, as their bid was complete and all requirements were met. This project will construct approximately thirty-two designated parking spaces in the commercial district of St. George Island between First and Chili Boulevard. The parking improvement would also include landscaping and... The parking improvement would also include landscaping and stormwater retention elements. Board Action to Issue the Notice of Award to GeoFlora Group LLC and to authorize the chairman to sign the contract documents once available.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Uh, Ms. Griffith, I do have a question. Um, after this is awarded, how soon will they be giving the notice to proceed?
Um, actually, uh, once we sign the contract documents, that will likely come sometime in early January, and we did plan on, um, actually getting signed design to do us some, you know, in-progress signs or construction area notices.
All right, sounds good. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next item is item number six, um, your Audit Services Engagement Letter/Contract. At the last meeting, the board approved the Audit Review Committee's recommendation and issued a notice of award to Lanigan and Associates. Attached is the Audit Engagement Letter. Board Action to Approve and Authorize the Chairman's Signature on the Attached Audit Engagement Letter with Lanigan and Associates.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, uh, next item, Franklin County has received notice that the Florida Department of Environmental Protection is working on the grant award agreement for the design, engineering, and renovation of approximately .56 miles in the commercial district, Third Street East to Third Street West, of the 10-foot-wide multi-use pass on St. George Island. In addition to resurfacing, the project will include the installation of surface warning tactile strips at seven intersection, seven intersections, and the installation of waste receptacles, benches, wayfinding signage, bicycle repair station kiosks, and shade trees near the ends of the project area. The total estimated project cost is $428,645, which will require a 20% grant match of $85,729. FDEP is unable to finalize the grant award agreement until the county confirms availability of the cash match. Upon searching for a viable funding source for the match, the best option is the use of TDC sales tax proceeds. There were two auditor general opinions, Lake County and Walton County, which substantiated the viability of this option. The commission will need to make the appropriate legislative finding that the resurfacing improvements to the SGI multi-use path will serve to promote tourism in Franklin County by improving user experience through adequate maintenance and facilities, and also designate the trail as an extension of a nature center, part of the funding objective E in the proposed plan. The path connects to the Great Northwest Coastal Trail Corridor via the Bryant-Patten Bridge. Trail connectivity acknowledgement letter was attached for reference to my report, and ties to the Mainland Trail to the St. George Island State Park at the east end. I do want to mention that this grant award was quite competitive and was ranked first for consideration by the Recreational Trails Program. Special thanks is extended to community member Isaac Lang for providing the county with drone videography of the site conditions, which was used in the project presentation to the committee. Action Item A, Board Action to Make the Legislative Finding That the Resurfacing Improvements to the SGI Multi-Use Path Will Serve to Promote and Encourage Tourism in Franklin County by Improving User Experience, and that the path shall be designated as an extension of a nature center due to its connectivity with the state park to the east and Great Northwest Coastal Trail Corridor to, to the north.
So move.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Seconded by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Uh, next action, Item B, for this particular topic, Board Action to Authorize the Availability of Match Funds Letter to FDEP in the amount of $85,729 for construction costs for the project and to include the project in the draft spending plan.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, um, and the next item, Commissioner, was, um, the late add item, so I believe you all will need to call for a public comment. Oh, they don't? Okay, 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 good. Okay, um, what was a late add item, I just came in yesterday, um, it's time to renew the rolling dump truck lease purchase agreement for the Franklin County Road Department. The Florida Sheriff's Association contract cost for a new 2024 heavy-duty Mack truck is $187,795.28. The county will own two trucks for up to 24 months, making the first and second-year lease payments of $20,000 per truck. Before the third payment, the trucks will be traded again with NextTran at market pricing and replaced with two new model-year dump trucks. This program allows the road department to have reliable dump trucks covered by an added extended warranty with little maintenance expense year after year. This is the sixth renewal of the rolling lease program with vendors Leasing 2 and NextTran, which was previously Capital City Truck. Board Action to Approve the Attached Resolution and Authorization for the chairman to sign the five-year lease purchase agreement with Leasing 2 to finance the purchase of two new 2023 Mack Model GR-64B dump trucks in the amount of $302,112.6 from NextTran of Calhasy, and the trade-in of the 2023 trucks, which I believe that was a typo because it's 2024 Mack trucks. Last four of the bid numbers, 3503 and 3502, subject to review and approval of the agreement by County Attorney Michael Shuler.
Same name.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Okay, uh, next item is just board information, it was the updated draft TDC spending plan. At the last meeting, the board reviewed the first draft of the TDC spending plan. Commissioners have, uh, since reached out and requested the inclusion of sports tourism in the plan's objectives. The county wishes to pursue and promote sports tourism by hosting and attracting large tournaments and events to the county. Also in the attached, there are minor corrections, modifications to the budgeted amounts to the spending categories for the objectives E and F to support grant match requirements, project cost adjustments, and additional clarification of project descriptions. Um, the TDC shall review the attached draft plan at their meeting on January 10th before the public hearing for adoption at the January 16th commission meeting.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Griffith?
Um, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Since Robertson Roberts are coming into the area to pave roads, um, it would be a good time to get our list of road paving, because at the last meeting I discussed, it's ridiculous that we can't get a road paved in our own county, because they're paying, having to pay a mobilization fee, which is not cheap, just to get the road payers in the county. Um, so whenever they get here, could they please let us know when they're here, instead of just going and slapping some blacktop on a road? Because I like roads in my district to be looked at and, uh, possibly resurfaced and/or restripped.
Uh, and actually, too, um, if you all could be formulating your list of roads to get to us as well, because, um, you know, with the engineering services contract, you know, we had discussed about actually going out for bid, um, you know, multiple times per year, so it could be a six-month contract, it could be a one-year contract, you know, just for a specified slate of roads.
Yep. I've got my list, I'm gonna confer with, uh, Mr. Neighbors, I've not been able to get a whole, uh, get in touch with him yet, but I plan on doing that. I've already got my list already, I just want to confer with him, because he is a waltz of knowledge with the roads in this area, and I'd like to get his input. Okay. Thank you.
Maybe, Ms. Griffith, maybe we'll all be able to, uh, after we get past Christmas time, get with you and give us kind of a list of all the districts, so we can have a game plan of which way we're heading. All right? Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Ms. Heather Riley, Supervisor of Elections, you're up next.
Good morning, it's good to see y'all this morning.
Good morning.
I am coming to ask for some funding for a new server for our voter registration system database. We had our, in an odd number of years, they do a cybersecurity assessment of our office. Um, they do two, the first one was of our tabulation, um, system, which is completely different than our voter registration system. Our voter registration system is co-joined with the state of Florida statewide voter registration system, but in the, um, assessment in December, it was December 4th, so I didn't have this information before budget time. Um, it come to our attention that my operating system for our voter registration database is at its end of life. Um, and I didn't think I was going to be here, because I had a family emergency, but we ended up, everything worked out that I got to be here, but I had typed up this little explanation, so I'm just gonna kind of read this to you guys. Um, updating and securing the critical infrastructure to ensure security, reliability, and integrity of the Franklin County's voter registration system is required by Florida Administrative Code 60-GG-2, and that was updated in 2022. The end-of-life operating system is a system legacy production server has reached its end of life. This means that the vendor no longer provides security updates or patches, leaving our system increasingly vulnerable to cyber threats. In an era where cybersecurity threats are evolving and becoming more sophisticated, operating on an end-of-life system poses a significant risk to the integrity of the voter registration data. The hardware of our current server is no longer supported by the manufacturer. Without hardware support, we face the risk of hardware failure without the availability of timely repliers or replacements. This scenario could lead to an unplanned downtime during which voter registration processes could be disrupted, and leading into a presidential year, you know, we don't want to have any disruptions of, of our voter registration processes. There are security vulnerabilities, um, continued use of an outdated server could expose sensitive voter information and registration, um, make it su- subject to data hacking, data breaches, and other cyber attacks, which would compromise the privacy and security of our citizens' data. Operating on unsupported software and hardware will put the SOE Office in violation of state and federal data protection regulations, leading to possible legal and financial repercussions. The benefits of acquiring the new server, um, a new server is, will be equipped with up-to-date hardware and software, it will ensure that we have the latest security features and updates that will protect us against cyber threats or unauthorized access. Um, modern servers offer improved performance, higher reliability, and better uptime, ensuring that our processes are smooth, efficient, and uninterrupted. Upgrading to a new server will ensure compliance with current data protection and cybersecurity standards and avoiding potential legal issues. Um, but my conclusion and recommendation is that the purchase of a new summer server is not just an upgrade, it is a necessary step to ensure the security, reliability, and efficiency of our voter registration and document management systems. The risks associated with continuing to use the outdated server and operating system are significant and could potentially lead to security breaches, legal challenges, and disruptions in the voter registration process. This investment will safeguard Franklin County SOE data and ensure operational continuity and demonstrate our commitment to upholding the integrity of our electoral process. And I've included the quote, um, from Inspired Technologies, who is our, um, contracted IT, and the quote is for 13-875.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the 13-875-99.
Nice.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, we have a second by Commissioner Amison, and thank Commissioner Ward as well.
Yeah, and I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead.
I, I just want to say that, you know, cybersecurity is a big thing now, and anything that we could do to protect our citizens is of the utmost importance in, in our, our voting, the way we vote, so I'm, I'm all in favor.
Exactly, thank you.
I'm actually surprised it's not as, more expensive than that, but...
Don't say that twice, that'll make you more expensive.
Right. It'll make you more expensive.
And also, with election stuff, it changes like every couple of years.
Yes, it's constant.
Every couple of years, it's always...
Well, it's constantly upgraded to make sure that we're staying on top of, because they're not gonna stop on their end trying to breach, and we've got to do everything we can to keep them out, so it's a constant upgrading battle, you know, keeping people out.
With the chairman for the record, he'll be paid out of capital outlay.
Okay. I had thought about answering the question, but I knew Ms. Griffith was not sitting in that seat. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Supervisor Riley. Yes, ma'am, Merry Christmas. All right, Sheriff A.J. Smith?
Does the chairman want to read it, or you want? Okay. Uh, school resource deputies, y'all come up.
One other for Gary.
Can they stand right here, inside?
Yes, yes. Everything will be secure with deputies inside the...
I think, I think we're in good shape today.
We're, we're good.
So, I know there's, it's not like an official day, you know, there's official days for everything, but I felt like, um, our school resource deputies are doing such a tremendous job protecting our schools and our kids, that I wanted to recognize them publicly. It seems like a lot of times, you know, uh, the folks at the sheriff's office are doing their regular jobs, they're out and about, they're seeing the public. These, uh, these deputies are in the schools every day, they're not out in a lot of places the other de- excuse me, other deputies are, so they may not be seen, and people really don't know what they're doing, but I wanted the public to know, and you to know, and I see the superintendent's here, and, uh, uh, the principal from the ABC, just what a tremendous job they are doing. And sometimes it's a thankless job, because a lot of times, parents are complaining about what they may do or what they have to do, and it's a fine line between discipline and criminal acts and stuff like that, so you really have to have the best of your best in the schools, because it is a very delicate balance, uh, again, between, you know, discipline, they don't do discipline, they do criminal investigations or criminal acts, that's what they're there for, and sometimes it is very, uh, uh, just a delicate situation that these, these deputies are in, so I just wanted to thank them. Uh, they do a tremendous job, and if I had to replace them, I don't know who I'd replace them with, because a lot of folks don't want to work in the schools, but these guys want to be there, and that makes the difference. They want to be there, so they're doing, like I said, they're just doing a tremendous job, I'm very proud of them, I'm proud they're part of the sheriff's office, I'm proud they're part of Franklin County, and I wanted to bring them up here, we have a, y'all did a proclamation, I appreciate that, I'll read the proclamation quickly, but also have some awards, and I wanted to present that to them. Brock? Thank you very much.
Drop two?
He had to drop Allen's, he had to drop Allen's.
Thank you. And Gary Martina, who is, uh, their supervisor, he's on vacation, who would guess?
All right.
We want to recognize, we want to recognize him as well, because he's the supervisor over these guys, so he's out there, um, making sure they have the tools they need, and, and you know, not only do they provide protection and security at the school, but they have to have specialized training, they've been, they go to a lot of training, which we kind of fit in, in the summertime, they'll do some of that training. Uh, Jamie just finished the, uh, critical intervention training, uh, last week, we brought the training here, and he finished that up, because that's a requirement by the, uh, by the state. So, I made the font where I had to use my glasses, so...
That's what it goes.
Uh, Franklin County School Resource Deputy Appreciation, whereas the Franklin County Sheriff's Office and the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners are dedicated to providing a safe and secure environment for schools and its students, providing highest quality training to school-based law enforcement deputies. Whereas school resource deputies, Captain Gary Martina, Lieutenant Alan Hamm, Sergeant Brock Johnson, and Deputy Jamie Schiber are valuable and essential members of the educating, education community, who work diligently to bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement by assisting in informal counseling, education, and support to students, school staff, and the communities they serve. Whereas by training law enforcement to, uh, counsel, educate, and promote school communities, the men and women of the FCSO continue to lead by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to our schoolchildren and school communities. Whereas school resource deputies have the immense responsibility of collaborating with school staff to identify, develop, and promote safety while also providing valuable resources to foster positive relationships with students and developing strategies to resolve problems that affect youth so they can reach their fullest potential. Therefore, in special recognition of the vital role that school resource deputies play in the community, the Board of County Commissioners of Franklin County, Florida, in regular session, hereby proclaim December 19, 2023, to be School Resource Deputy Appreciation Day, signed by Ricky Jones, uh, chairperson. Thank you very much, and, uh, I don't have anything else to say, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll give you a motion.
Yes, we do need a motion to, uh, adopt this resolution.
I made that motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Amison, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you, guys, for everything you do. You guys form a relationship with these young children, can kind of help shape them and mold them, and the relationship that you guys have with them is, is unparalleled, and I know what your job is, is not easy, because I know you deal with a lot of different things, and, you know, I just appreciate everything that you guys do, so congratulations and thank you for your service.
Any other Commissioners?
Uh, am I working now? Uh, well, I know all three of y'all personally.
Well, I know all three of y'all personally. I know your character. They're good men, but at least I know where you were because Cruz is wanting to know where Mr. Jamie was. Now, I told him you was with Gary Allen hunting. But anyway, I'll let him know. We appreciate what y'all do for our kids, especially ones of us that still got kids there. Thank y'all.
I got something for Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Having worked with these guys and currently working with them, Sheriff, you do have the right people in place if and event ever happen. I hope it never does, but I have confidence in all three of these men. When Jason Register was at the Learning Center, he was phenomenal. So they don't get enough credit, but they have one of the most important jobs in this county, which is protecting Franklin County's most precious assets, which is the children. Thank you.
And I also want to thank all you guys for the valuable part you play in whether we know it or not, the first interaction that all those kids are having with law enforcement are you, and that's a very positive thing to try to help shape. They are our future. They are our tomorrow. So having good, positive role models around them that are wearing the badge and they see they're trying to do the right thing is a big deal. Thank you all for that very much.
I'll just say thank you.
Sheriff Commissioners, tell me, come up front. Superintendent, and he did say the ABC.
Who are we going to?
Picture time.
Are we going to?
Yep, you guys go to.
What are we going to?
There we go. Okay. One, two, three. All right.
Good job. But, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't end there.
No, it doesn't.
We have another proclamation.
Yes, we do. Mr. Mitch Griner, will you come forward, please?
I don't know how you guys pulled this one off.
Yeah, they run in the store. Where's he at? He's running the store.
Fifteen years.
Yeah.
Fifteen years.
I've never been on this side.
Now you'll get to know what it feels like to them.
I don't think I like it too much. I know how they feel. I know how they feel now.
Ms. Cordia, please proceed.
So I wanted to be the one to present this to you because we've worked so well and so long together. So I wanted to present this plaque to you for your fourteen years of dedication, commitment, leadership, inspiration, and volunteer hours as a member of the chairman, member and chairman of the Board of Adjustment Advisory Board and Plenty and Zoning Adjustment Board.
Thank you, ma'am.
Fourteen years, Mr. Chairman. That's a lot of that.
Picture time.
Mitch, I would tell you that Kim would be so proud, your hair is cold and everything.
I'm going to go with Ann standing on it.
All right. On the count of three. One, two, three. There's a couple of acts we have to make sure. Awesome.
I mean, the chairman, the big deal about this is that this is a Mitch volunteered for fourteen years. That's a long time to have a volunteer in your house, Commissioners, so just, you have some staff members that don't want to work that much less volunteers, so, you know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will say this. As Michael was saying, it is volunteer, and I say, and I have said at many meetings, that out of all the volunteer boards in this county, the Board of Adjustment, Plenty and Zoning Board is one I would not want to sit on free of charge because it is not an easy job. I know you get phone calls or used to. Hopefully, they'll stop now. Phone calls galore. Some people upset, some people angry, and it's definitely not an easy job. And to serve fourteen years, I appreciate your service. I know you weren't my representative, but you represented the whole county, and I appreciate your service, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm just going to tell you, thank you. You served with John Murphy for a long time on there from Alligator Point. He was a great man. He talked you well, didn't he, Mitch?
He did.
He did. He was good at it.
I liked it very much.
I served on there to let you know. This goes way back. I served on the Plenty and Zoning for about eight years, and then I decided to run for county commission. And I had the pleasure of working with John Murphy, too. He was a good man. All of them's good because any, you know, the thing about it is, it's easy to go to meetings if you get paid, but these are people that's volunteer. And in a community as small as what Franklin County is, if it was not for our volunteers on everything that we have, schools, whatever, we would be lacking very much. So, yeah, the volunteers deserve a hand every day, you know, for doing the things they do. But Mitch, have fun.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Griner. I appreciate it.
No problem.
So I know you, I know you won't tell your story, so I'm going to tell your story for you.
Oh, I knew you was going to say that.
So I'll tell your story for you. The, no, it is, it is a...
I'll make sure you get it right.
There you go. That's what you're here for. It is a really, a really important and valuable asset, as Commissioner Sanders was saying, to have advisory boards that are made up from the citizenry. It's a check and balance type system. They are hearing ideas and potential developments or property changes first. Very valuable. But I will tell you, just so the rest of everybody knows, not that it was a mistake, but kind of the way Mr. Griner got on the board, when he first got on the Board of Adjustment, he was talking with Commissioner Lockley at the gas station after he'd just got elected. Commissioner Lockley said, well, you know, I've got a lot of people, I've got some empty seats on these volunteer boards. I need to find some people to serve. And they're just talking back and forth, and as he gets ready to leave, Mitch is like, well, if I can help you in any way, let me know, Noah. And said, about a week later, Rachel Huckabee called him and said, hey, you need to come down to the P and Z office. I got a packet to give you. I said, okay, what kind of packet is it? She said, well, you're on the Board of Adjustment. At the last county commission meeting, you got put on the Board of Adjustment by Commissioner Lockley and the rest of the board.
And that's exactly how it happened, too. I didn't, I didn't even know. I came to Rachel Ward's office. I didn't even know what a BOA stood for.
Mr. Chairman, you got voluntold.
But I enjoyed every, every meeting. I enjoyed it. It's my pleasure to serve the county.
Yes, sir. Thank you for years of service, sir.
Thank y'all. I appreciate this.
All right. Up next is public comments. Ms. Debbie Jordan, I think she might be attending by Zoom.
Yeah, let me see if I can get her to raise her hand. Well, there's only one phone number, so I hope that this is Debbie here. Let me do this.
I don't see a phone number here, so I can't help you with that.
Oh, no, yeah, no, up there. Ms. Jordan, are you one five four nine? Wait a minute. Yes. Okay, you're unmuted, and you're able to talk if you... You're muted on your end, but there you go, Ms. Jordan.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Debbie Jordan of Lannar Village. I'm calling this morning to express my appreciation for what I had the chance to witness yesterday, which is a beautiful red, shiny, brand-spanking-new fire engine rolling into the fire station in Lannar yesterday afternoon. What a beautiful sight. Our volunteers have been putting forth admirable effort to do everything in their power to learn, train, be prepared, and to protect the lives and homes of our neighbors. We are all eagerly anticipating having a functioning fire department, and the community is immensely proud of our volunteers. As many of you know, this issue of public safety is one of which I'm very passionate. I'd like to express my thanks to Commissioner Sanders for her part in making sure that we got this truck at the station, as well as I'd like to thank the entire commission and all who had a role in making the acquisition of this beautiful and desperately necessary fire apparatus. The fire two months ago, which was on Colorado Street, was not in the village. I only bring that up because we were talking about the S-four ordinance, and that is not part of the S-four district. So I just want to clarify that that was several blocks west of the S-four district area, but I think they may have had a better outcome if we had an operational volunteer fire department. And I'm sure it was difficult for all of our, unable to provide quicker response time, but we will always thank Carabelle Volunteer Fire Department for jumping in as always. I wish all of you a blessed Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I offer a warm welcome to the wonderfully qualified Commissioner Groom. Thank you, that's all I have. Oh, wait, one last thing. I want to say I absolutely, I realize it's an app dot thing, but I absolutely love the Hawk crosswalks. We needed them. I used to live around the corner from there. I am just so grateful they are there. Thank you. Happy New Year. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Griner, the other two that I have, one of them says it's about the relocation Chip Morrison parking sign. I'm assuming that's under that item.
I'm inside. That's not a public, yes, yes, that item. That's, yeah, that's coming up.
Right. Under the presentation. And the same with the other one. It's with a different, but it's part of the presentation.
Yes, and I have one for Mr. John Barry that I think is about the Chip Morrison also.
Okay, but that's all under general.
So I would recommend that you take a quick break because the next two presentations, they both, they both have presentations, which probably will run close to fifteen minutes apiece. So you might want to take a break now, and then we come back and we start with Ms....
Let's recess for five minutes.
Wait a minute. Yes, okay, you're unmuted and you're able to talk if you... You're muted on your end, but there you go, Ms. Jordan.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, this is Debbie Jordan of Lanark Village. I'm calling this morning to express my appreciation for what I had the chance to witness yesterday, which was a beautiful red shiny brand spanking new fire engine rolling into the fire station in Lanark yesterday afternoon. What a beautiful sight. Our volunteers have been putting forth admirable effort to do everything in their power to learn, train, be prepared, and to protect the lives and homes of our neighbors. We are all eagerly anticipating having a functioning fire department, and the community is immensely proud of our volunteers. As many of you know, this issue of public safety is one of which I'm very passionate. I'd like to express my thanks to Commissioner Sanders for her part in making sure that we got this truck at the station, as well as I'd like to thank the entire commission and all who had a role in making the acquisition of this beautiful and desperately necessary fire apparatus. Uh, the fire two months ago, which was on Colorado Street, was not in the village. I only bring that up because we were talking about the S4 ordinance, and that is not part of the S4 district, so I just want to clarify that that was several blocks west of the S4 district area, but I think they may have had a better outcome if we had an operational volunteer fire department. And I'm sure it was difficult for all of our unable to provide quicker response time, but we will always thank Carabel Volunteer Fire Department for jumping in as always. I wish all of you a blessed Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I offer a warm welcome to the wonderfully qualified Commissioner Groom. Thank you, that's all I have. Oh, wait, one last thing. I want to say I absolutely, I realize it's an app dot thing, but I absolutely love the Hawk crosswalks. We needed them, I used to live around the corner from there. I am just so grateful they are there. Thank you, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. World, the other two that I have, one of them says it's about the relocation Chip Morrison parking sign, assuming that's under that item?
I'm inside, that's not a public, yes, yes, that item.
Right. Yeah, that's coming up. Under the presentation, and the same with the other one. It's with a different, but it's part of the presentation.
Yes, and I have one for Mr. John Barry that I think is about the Chip Morrison also.
Okay, but that's all under general.
So, I would recommend that you take a quick break, because the next two presentations, they both have presentations which probably will run close to fifteen minutes apiece.
Okay.
So, you might want to take a break now, and then we come back and we start with Ms. Howard.
Let's recess for five minutes. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Our next thing on the agenda is Ms. Lynn Wilder, Keep Franklin County Beautiful with an update. Ms. Wilder, please proceed. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing me to come and present our Keep Franklin County Beautiful effort this morning. I'm looking forward to a lot of future positive interaction with you guys and trying to join forces and really make this county shine. I'd like to just start out by telling you that I first discovered this place in 1989 and fell in love with it, and it really does feel like home to me. So, I'm not from here, I don't have generations of family here, but I do love this area. And, so I'll get started. So, I'm just going to page down, right?
You say scroll.
I'm technologically challenged.
It's easier if you just...
Oh, that. Okay. Yep, thank you. Thank you.
Where's that box of the... Where's the box of the, drop-down box? Oh, okay.
Okay. So, anyway, just to give you an idea of what I'm going to go over here. Introductions, we've actually got people here from the Board of Keep Franklin County Beautiful, we've got people here from the Board of Keep Waculla County Beautiful, our neighbors, and online we've got folks from Keep Florida Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful. So, they're all here to support us and answer any questions that I can't. So, also going to say, talk about who Keep Franklin County Beautiful is, why we're here, why we took this route, who we're working with, where we are in our affiliation process. So, we're not actually a Keep America Beautiful affiliate yet, but we're looking for that to happen in a few months. And... Help. Oh, I can do that. Introductions, so Keep Franklin County Beautiful, they're here, they're again on Zoom. Our board members right now, they probably will expand, are Scott Davis, Sophia Fonseca, Fonseca Megan Christopher, Anthony Del Campo, Pauline Watts, and Thomas Becknell. So, there's, it's a small group right now, but young and enthusiastic. We have some Keep Waculla County Beautiful guests here. We've got Commissioner Mike Kemp is back here, Jim Davis, the Board President, Lloyd Childress, Stephen Leslie Cushman, Ethel Jefferson, and the Executive Director Tammy Nason is probably online. We also have online our Executive Director from Keep Florida Beautiful Savannah Christie, and Keep America Beautiful's Executive Director Mallory Coffey. You guys have heard of Keep Franklin County Beautiful, I mean, when I was a kid, right? It was on TV, picking up trash. They've been around since 1953, they're a nonprofit, and they strive to end littering, improve recycling, and beautify America's communities. So, that's their mission. When we become an affiliate, that'll be our mission. We just received nonprofit status this past week, so we are an official nonprofit organization. We hope to be an affiliate in a few months, and in order to become affiliate, we've got a few more things on our list to do. But again, our focus areas are the same, is Keep America Beautiful. How are we going to do this? There's tried and true methods, education, cleanup events, support, and that's the form of money and volunteers. We've got access to a lot of money. And joining partners in the county and outside of the county. So, there's a lot of groups that do things that overlap with us, so I think we can really make a difference. And innovation, if we can't figure out how to solve a problem, we can solve it, we just haven't innovated enough yet. Benefits, healthy environment, environmental stewardship. We, I think, one of our Keep Waculla County Beautiful folks will talk about the cost savings that, to Waculla County, actually, because of this program. We've got so much experience from Keep America Beautiful, Keep Florida Beautiful, and there's a hundred and, or a hundred and four affiliates around the United States. If they've, if we've got a problem, somebody's probably already figured out how to solve it. We're connected to all of them. Keep, in Florida, we've got about forty affiliates. And again, as I said, there's a source of a lot of funding through Keep America Beautiful. And also, community pride, we all have it, but seeing a crew out there with shirts and the good equipment to pick up things and advertising and everything really shows that we have, we have pride, and we want to keep our county clean, and we want our visitors too. And there's business, small business opportunities, both for advertising and recognition, and maybe even a business startup. So, here's what Waculla County has, this is some information they gave me, so this is a year's worth of information. You can read this, I'm not going to go through it, but a lot of volunteer hours. We're required, in order to keep our affiliation, to have so many cleanup events a year, so many education events, and so many beautification events. So, we, we have to do this in order to keep getting the funding, in order to keep the, under the umbrella of Keep America Beautiful. They have adopt-a-highway groups, they get funding through the state DOT to do that, and this is just a snapshot of kind of what they've done with the amount of trash they've collected, the amount of roadways cleaned. You've heard of their Great American Cleanup they participate in, they do a forest cleanup, their river cleanup, so that it's really things that we can learn from. And I got numbers yesterday on the cost benefit for this past year for them, hang on. Okay, the last reporting, the last reporting period showed a cost benefit for Waculla County of seventy-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars for this group. So, possibilities, what can we do? And again, these are all possibilities right now. We have actually started this first one, yes, we can, and this is Apalachicola specific right now, but I'd love to expand it to St. George Island, East Point, Lanark, Alligator Point, and that's just getting aluminum cans. It benefits the environment, they're easy to recycle, it saves energy, and it saves landfill space. So, we've got, right now, the farmer's market, people come and drop off their cans every two weeks. We've got three businesses in Apalachicola that have allowed us to put a trash can there to collect aluminum cans, and we've had no problems with people dumping trash and filling it up with, you know, things that aren't aluminum. And we get, we get paid for that, we get fifty cents a pound for that to help us. Glass-to-sand is a small business opportunity, I think, we're looking into that. Other, the city of New Orleans has done that with their glass bottles, make sandbags. There's a sand shortage, so we're definitely pursuing that. Keep America Beautiful has a cigarette litter prevention program. We get the receptacles for the cigarettes, we put them in places that we know people smoke and where there's a problem, we arrange pickup and actually recycle those. Adopt-a-road, adopt-a-spot, reduce wildlife litter interaction, like bears in the fishing line, you know, with birds and things like that. Again, these are all possibilities, we're not going to do this next year. Here's some of the events that happen. One interesting one, I think, is the trash fishing tournament. A group will come in and actually set this whole thing up for us, and everybody goes out and fishes for trash, and you get awards for the most weight. Assisting the county with Amnesty Days. Beautification, you guys are probably aware of the lethal bronzing disease for our palm trees that are affecting this area now. It's a big deal, and I think, you know, a county approach would be fantastic. I mean, we're at risk of losing our palm trees, as they have in southern Florida and parts of Texas. I'm not going to go through the list of partners, just leave it as, there's so many groups out there that could have a part of this, and we could be a part of and help get funding for, or recognition. And you've got the slide presentation, so what's next? Expect, well, we've already got our nonprofit status, except, expect us to become an affiliate this year, and then we're going to start prioritizing, planning, and then proceeding, and we need your help. We need, obviously, for litter, recycling, things like that, we want to coordinate with you and be a partner. Here's some useful links, contact information. These are litter facts for you guys to look at later, you know, before you go to bed tonight, maybe. It's intuitive, it's what we already know, but this is actually from a study that Keep America Beautiful did in 2020, and it just says, you know, when people see an area already littered, they're more likely to litter. When a trash, there's no trash can, people are nearby, people are more likely to litter. For every person in the United States, there's about a hundred and fifty pieces of litter. So, it's, it's really interesting, most litter ends up in waterways. And with that, I'm done, and I've got Commissioner Kemp here, and of the Waculla County, Keep Waculla County Board President of the Board here, if you'd like them, just to say a few things on the benefit to Waculla County for this program.
That's right.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are y'all? I know most everybody up there. Obviously, I'm the County Commissioner in Waculla, speaking on behalf of this program. It's been fifteen-plus years that we have sponsored this year, and our current county Commissioners, we give forty thousand dollars. You will ten times fold that by the amount of work that is done. When you say a thousand plus volunteers, you know, out every event that we have, not at every event we have a thousand, but over the, over the different events that we have, you're going, you wouldn't believe how much garbage that we have collected through the national forest, through the river, you know, through adopt-a-roads and stuff like that. So, there's, what it's going to open you up to for is, there's also a lot of grants, you know, that you're going to be available for with this right here. You know, I'm in support of it, you know, for our county, because I've seen what it's done, you know. I've only been part of the Keep Waculla County Beautiful for the last probably four or five years as a volunteer, but Tammy, who, I've spent twenty-eight years at the Sheriff's Office, Tammy had an office in there, so I know what she went through and what she still goes through trying to get done in Waculla County. So, I'm here for any questions that you may have, as county, if there's any kind of question, I'll be glad to answer anything for you, if y'all do.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
No, just thanks for, for coming.
Yep, thank y'all, and I hope y'all very consider this, it will definitely be a benefit to your county. Y'all's tourism is a lot better than ours, of course, in Waculla County, so it's certainly going to be a benefit to you. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Steve Cushman, I've been on Keep Waculla County Beautiful's Board for thirteen years now, seven of those as president over the various years. One thing I would like to say is because y'all are a high tourism area, this is an organization that will directly benefit you. Our current, right now, on our stats that I'll update, we're at around thirty-six to forty thousand pounds of trash a year that we pick up through various efforts we have. We started a river cleanup on Waculla River, starting at Lower Bridge at ninety-eight, going to, or the Upper Bridge going to Lower Bridge, about three miles of it, five years ago. The first year, we picked up a forty cubic yard dumpster full of trash out of that river. Over education process and cleaning it over the last five years, we just had one weekend before last, it was barely half of my pickup truck bed full. So, we've reduced that, that much over that time. But the thing an organization like this will bring to the county is, it brings your community back together in ways that you would never believe, like, we had the hardest time with us because of the forest, which y'all have as much forest as we do with the hunters. The hunters would come in from Georgia, wherever they're coming from, and just trash the forest, we would go clean it up. Over the years, we've been able to educate them to understand that when they leave trash behind in the forest, it impacts the very animals they're hunting, and the hunting starts declining, so that's a big benefit to it. But for us, the resilience that it brings in our community, we see different people over thirteen years, I've been there, I've worked with thousands of volunteers. I see people that have nine-to-five business jobs working for the state in Tallahassee out, tromping through the marshlands in the muck out there with me, and we're covered from head to toe in filth when we're done on Love Coast Cleanup Day. So, that resilience that it brings is well worth it. I can tell you, the forty thousand that we get from the county, twenty of that is a federal grant, we get another eighteen thousand from FDOT in a grant, so the county, for Waculla County, is really only putting twenty thousand of taxpayer money into it. The return we get on that right now, if they had to hire the people to do what we do, is eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. That's part of what we return. What we're returning on that cost benefit of the budget we run on is about one-point-two million dollars a year. So, it's a lot of trash, and it's always going to be there. If you have forests like we do, which you guys do, you know people are going to litter in it. You know, when the vacationers come to St. George Island, there's going to be litter there. There's a, there's a jewel in St. George right there, that if a beach cleanup was organized once or twice a year over there, the people that live at St. George Island will come out, they'll get behind the organization and just make it stronger than what it is. That's what I have, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
No, I think that's good. We do currently do some, some yearly cleanups, though, coastal cleanup and different things. We do have those things going, not, not as many as what Ms. Wilder named off, for sure.
Right.
But we do, we do at least have some of those, people that have been volunteering their time for quite a
We've, we've had Keep Franklin County Beautiful before. Back when Van Johnson was Director of Solid Waste, we had a very good program with Keep Franklin County Beautiful. That's when we got the recycling bins and all that, and we put money into it. Michael, do you think you can, do you think you can go back on one, some of those old budget requests and see how much money we did give Keep Franklin County Beautiful back then during, through Van's budget? And let's see, and then we'll have a starting point. And every year, the St., the Tate Hill Forest has a cleanup every year. And I'm going to tell you, if I see a piece of trash, I stop and pick it up. If you do that, you don't have to worry about nothing, because you got your, you're doing your share.
Michael, I think that's around two thousand and two. I found some old records with the Keep Florida County Beautiful folks.
We had it until he retired. He retired way after.
Okay, so if, if you're gonna, if you need someplace to start searching.
Yeah. But it's very, it's a very needed thing. Everybody needs to just clean up after theirselves, and then we'd be all right, wouldn't we? But some people don't. And, you know, some people coming down to the coast and stuff, they think we're obligated to pick up the garbage, you know, so. Just the mindset of people, which, what you're going to have to do is, you're going to have to turn the, turn around the mindset of people.
Yes.
Into where they can realize that, that one of the worst things that I saw is like Jack Redlow blessed his heart. And he, he tells me those bottle holders, the bottle holders, gets that there, and he showed me a turtle that had the bottle holder on it, you know, just from flying out of the back. You just need to be mindful. Thank you, Ms. Lynn, for trying to start it back up.
Yes, ma'am. I think we have a positive minimum going forward, and we definitely have a historic precedent with what we've done in the past, and we need to try to revive that. I will say that that's very needed, and I know recycling kind of, for us, took a negative thing, like it did for everybody during COVID, when there was some national exposure going on between us and other countries, and recycling just kind of stopped because those countries quit buying it. I don't think that's the case today, so we definitely need to see what we can do to, to revive this program. Thank you, Ms. Wilder. We appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll keep giving you updates.
Yes, ma'am, please do. Yes, ma'am, please do. Ms. Nanda Ming, request for parking.
Yeah. Oh, she left her trash thing. So, my name's Nanda Ming, and I'll go ahead and start and do some little introductions as I can talk this morning. I am a full-time resident on Alligator Point, and I've come in front of y'all a couple of times regarding safety issues on Alligator Point, which is near and dear to my heart. Hate to see anything happen. And with me is the president of our fire, new fire, our new president of our fire department, Dick Hosford, and I brought Cindy Slater, who is a resident on Chip Morrison, and the three of us have come together with APSTA backing us and creating a presentation to you about some safety issues we have. And I'm going to give it over to Mr. Hosford first to explain who APSTA actually is.
Right, real quick, because I know there's some new members here, and, and there's some members that have known about APSTA forever. And so APSTA's an organization, it's Alligator Point, St. Teresa Taxpayers Association. So we virtually, and it's been, what, over fifty years old? Fifty years in, I think it's over fifty years been down there, to represent the taxpayers in that area, because we are the farthest east in Franklin County, so as soon as you come over the bridge, you're in Alligator Point, then you hit St. Teresa. And it's an area where folks hit first when they come across the bridge from Waukulla County and Leon County. It's the first white sand they see, first beaches that they want to come to when they come into Franklin County. And so it's, it's changed over the years, and APSTA has changed over the years. We were just recently, and when I say APSTA's changed, because the problems have changed, obviously. And we just had a membership drive, we've got over seventy new members. We're going to really make a move for this organization, kind of be somewhat of, like we said, we're not a homeowners association, it is representing all these folks who kind of keep the numbers down in, in your room here from trying to come up as an individual voice. We have our meetings once a month at the church over there on Alligator Point. Our board members meet at nine, and then everybody's welcome to come in and at Alligator Point and St. Teresa and come to our meetings and tell us what the problems they have, and so that, and then we listen to them, and then we say, we're going to try to bring them to, to you guys, so that you can hear it from kind of a joint voice. And then we sit there and also talk about those problems, is it something we can solve without worrying you guys about it? Because we know your resources are limited a lot of times. We can look at the money that goes toward Alligator Point versus a place like St. George, and we can see where, hey, you know, we're kind of on the lower end there, we're not, we're not, we don't get the same dollars. And we're willing, this new APSTA's willing to throw our, our resources at problems if we can, if we're needed, which I think is a, a big change for us. Some of the problems we have are unique, as you well know, we're going to address one in a few minutes, that because when it was first, this park was first established, there was a through road, but, I'm going to finish it up. But storms come in and they change things. So what we want to do is make sure that as we give this representation, that we are there for the safety of folks on Alligator Point, that's the first thing, and then also to maintain things that are already in place as much as possible, because if they go, if they get dilapidated, then you have to replace and not maintain, and that's costly, as you guys know. Okay, so go ahead. Got any questions? I know that anybody want to ask any other questions about APSTA in general? I know this, Ms. Sanders, you know about it, it's been forever, so, but we're trying to be, going, twenty-first century, we're going to make this a real, we've got some good members, new people on the point, year-round people, that's who we're trying to represent, too, the people who make Alligator Point their home, and not just a vacation spot.
I will say, everybody's very aware of the group, the function the group serves. I will say, just me personally, I didn't really appreciate the comment that Alligator Point don't get nothing, and St. George Island gets everything.
I didn't say that.
It's the way it come across.
I apologize for that, but that's not what I meant. I meant we'd probably get less.
Well, it was about a four or five million dollar road that we worked to get in there to make sure we had a way to get in, I mean.
But that's not, that's.
Just come straight, you don't have to come in a sideways. Just come straight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, this is what the committee came up with, and hopefully with the pictures, you'll see some of our major concerns. Our objective today is to discuss the history of parking on Chip Morrison, issues related to parking options, and Chip Morrison property owner comments. Some of the history, it was really fun looking at this. Commissioner Sanders, you were so involved in this project, and we totally appreciate that. You worked with APSTA, trying to create solutions to the public safety challenges that are in the Alligator Point community. Dan Rothwell was the county commissioner, or the engineer at that point, and he did develop the consensual plans for the three current beach access we have. And just reference, when Hermine came through in two thousand and sixteen, she did chip out a big part of Chip Morrison, no pun intended here, so it's no longer a through road. This was the original parking design for Chip Morrison, created in two thousand and six. It started with five spaces that were parallel to the road, and this, remember, the road was through, so it connected to Alligator Point on, on two parts. This is the updated one in two thousand and ten, and they increased the parking spaces from five to eight. And then just as a reminder, a year ago in July, Mr., or Commissioner Bolt at that time, did approach the board and asked for a parking committee, and y'all did approve that, and we appreciate that. We would like to see this to continue and actually form a committee, not just for short-term problems, but for long-term issues and things that we can do to help make it safe. This is a picture of Chip Morrison off of Alligator Drive. You see our water tower building in the background. We are facing east. This is another picture of facing Chip Morrison from the west side, and as you can kind of see, the truck parked there on the right, that is the beach parking. This is the end of Chip Morrison. As you can see, it's no longer a through road, and it also creates difficulties in turning around for visitors. They are turning around on private properties, is what they're doing. There have been some comments from homeowners where they actually get stuck in their yards, because it's a sand yard, so they have to have help to get them pulled out of their stuck situation. This is our beach entrance off of Chip Morrison, located on the ninety-degree curve. As you can see, we have a nice trash receptacle, there's a sign there, and then flag warnings. This is the beach access parking lot, which is empty. We are looking, we're standing on Alligator Drive, looking towards the beach access, which you can see it way back there in the very, very back. This is, oh, let me go back. Well, let's see if I can go back. This is looking west, towards the curve, on, going out of Chip Morrison, and again, you see the beach access on the left. Oh, and there's a little car tucked back here, I don't know if you can see, behind the bushes on the right-hand side. This is the ninety-degree blind turn. This is the one that is giving us just shivers at night when we're thinking about it. You can see that the rocks were put there by our sheriff's department and the road department, I believe it was a year ago, to try to help curb some of the parking issues because people were parking on this curve. And this is a video, let's see if I can get it to play. So pretend we're driving down Chip Morrison. Beach parking is on the left, residence is on the right, residential house. And there's our beach access, and then you saw the end of Chip Morrison. Now we're coming back the other way. This is what's, really scares us. You can't see the second truck that's parked. And if they're unloading children or equipment, or kids are running in the street, they don't see them.
No, but let me interrupt you just a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you got, have you got one of the end of Chip Morrison Drive?
I did.
On the east side?
Not from the east side. So, this is, yeah, how, how long do you think that the road is out? See where the blue house is right there? That's where, there's no road. So it's that far down the length of the beach. I mean, it's quite a bit, yeah.
That's where it got washed out in between there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And I believe FEMA, it was too expensive, and so that it just, it's no longer a through road, so now it's just a dead end, yeah. At the, the corner of the, the first slide on the left, you can kind of see the old firehouse. Okay, we did the video. So this is just some still pictures of the parking. The picture on the right, I think, speaks volumes about the safety issues. This car was trying to leave the point, this is a full-time homeowner trying to exit Chip Morrison to get to Alligator Drive, and she can't see incoming traffic, and she can't really see what's going on behind that black truck. And this is very common, and I'll explain why. Here's another, where this truck tried really hard, you can see they pulled up way into the, into the bushes. But again, you can see where the beach access is, so there is definitely blind spots. Here's a picture of, of a child, dad's unloading the equipment. Again, if a car's coming and trying to leave Chip Morrison, can they see that child in the street? Especially if there's another car coming into Chip Morrison. This is an aerial view, so you can kind of see how that one truck has its little bumper stuck out there, and if they hadn't pulled all the way in, obviously, they would be parked on the street. We have issues, too, with people moving the boulders on the other side, and I actually confronted this young man and said, why are you doing this? Well, I want to go to the beach, and I can move the boulder. And so he just parked there. And this, too, creates safety hazards, because if a car's parked there, you got somebody trying to come in, you got somebody trying to come out, you got people backing up, it's just chaotic. This is another aerial, or another, two pictures of summertime parking. As you can see, they're parking across the street, they're parking parallel, they're parking sideways, they're just, it's just crazy. And this is just Chip Morrison beach access. This again is, the red truck tried really hard, I liked seeing that, but the car on the right actually parked directly across from the beach access. They must have thought it was a handicap parking spot. Okay, this one is what we would like to show you about the depth of the parking, it's not consistent. The deepest spot to the tree lines, we took a tape measure out, was sixteen feet, most trucks nowadays are nineteen feet. So we're going to have three feet of truck in the road, because it's, if it's not cleaned out or it's not pushed up for it. Alligator Point Fire Department is behind us on this. President Dick Hosford stated that the fire department supports the relocation of the current beach access on Chip Morrison. Dick, you want to say anything else?
It's just all the, all the emergency vehicles, whether it be your EMS or whatever, and a lot of times you'll have, you'll have multiple coming in, you know, we respond, we're first responders there, so if we show up, and then we're waiting on the Franklin County EMS coming in, then all of a sudden we have two trucks back there. And on the busy weekends, as y'all know, things get busier. Right now, you're seeing the empty parking spot, but anyway, we have one hundred percent behind it.
Thank you.
We have three options we'd like to present to y'all. Obviously, the first one is to close the beach parking. No, do not close the beach access, leave the access open, but close the beach parking. This is probably our easiest, least costly, and safest one to do, eliminating all these safety issues. We can accomplish this by having boulders or barriers, barriers or rocks put in the parking spots. And this option, and just FYI, I did talk to Sheriff Smith, both Cindy and I did last Friday morning, and he's in favor of this option, obviously, but he is behind us in support on trying to help increase safety issues, or safety procedures on the point. Our second option is to update the current parking, which obviously means to create distinct beach parking spaces, which entail cutting back trees and bushes and the easement to accommodate the vehicles. We suggest installing concrete parking bumpers, like are on our second and third beach access to delineate, this is a parking spot, so they can't park parallel. And this will also help give the sheriff clear directions on how parking can be enforced. Again, this option does not eliminate the safety issues.
On that, also, if you did go with option two, to soften that curve, bring the parking back and make it impossible for, you know, pull it back off that curve, so as you did come around, that first car you could see would be well toward Alligator Drive. That's probably the biggest issue, especially for the emergency vehicles, again, because when you come around there, you're forced to go in the other lane. And realize that the parking change from the parallel to their perpendicular parking they're doing now, from the original design, there was what, five to seven parking spots, I believe, and now they're trying to jam in twelve, you know how it works, they try to jam in as many as they can.
Okay. This third one is probably one we're most excited about. This is supported by the Franklin County Sheriff, APSTA, the Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department, and the homeowners on Chip Morrison Road. What we are suggesting is to move the existing parking to the south side of Alligator Drive, adjacent to the Chip Morrison on-county-owned easement. This will put all of our three public beach accesses on Alligator Drive. We would like to see defined parking spaces, and we would like to utilize the old parking area to create a pedestrian walkway, and we would suggest using cement barriers or rocks to delineate the pathway. to delineate the pathway and prevent vehicle parking. But this would allow our visitors to safely walk down Chip Morrison to access the beach access. What it would look like? It would look like this. So you can see where the current parking is, you see the beach access. We suggest moving it directly onto Alligator Drive. Not in front of the water tower, or I mean, our water building, but to move it further towards Chip Morrison.
And not increasing the number of parking spots that are currently available. So if you looked at and said, "How many parking spots are we doing now?" If y'all determined that there's nine of them that would be safe on that spacing delineating, taking away the curve, then say, "How much room will we have to use to put the same nine here designated?" And then there's no crossing of the street, they're able to stay on that side and get to the beach, which unlike the second access, they have to cross the street, which creates a problem. We're trying to eliminate that.
Thank you. So what we've done is we have contacted the 25 property owners on Chip Morrison. Two property owners did not respond. I think one of them was a house that was not there anymore.
Oh, I'll just, I'll just speak to that because I'm Cindy Slater, permanent, full-time resident Chip Morrison. Yeah, I contacted all the homeowners. One home was in the process of being sold. Even though they supported it, they did not give us anything written as far as supporting it because they did say the house was just sold. One house is uninhabitable. It should be condemned or knocked down. It's been that way since Michael. And then there are two lots and one is the owner for that corner. He did not respond. He was contacted twice. And then the other is another lot that's owned by a rental, it's owned by a corporation and they were not contacted. But every home that's on Chip Morrison that is inhabitable, rental property or full-time residence or part-time residence, everybody had been contacted. And with the exception of the one home that was just sold, everybody has responded, written, supporting either closing that beach access parking or moving the beach access parking around the corner. That's, that's, we all feel that's the safest thing to do. We've all had issues with people, they'll even come up to your door and ask you if they can use your restroom. My husband's pulled out numerous vehicles out of our front yard. We've had to put up fences to keep people from parking in your yard. And that's just a small thing. The big thing is the safety. And they all had voiced concerns about the safety. We have a lot of kids there, a lot of kids, a lot of grandkids, great-grandkids, whatever, that like to go down to the beach. And it's so stressful for parents or grandparents to say, you know, "Wait for us. Don't run because you never know when somebody's going to come flying around the corner." And so we've got comments, we've got emails from everybody. We'll give those to you so you can look at them when you have time. But we really feel like moving that parking is going to create a safer environment for the whole community. Chip Morrison is really excited about it to get it done.
Thank you.
So these are just some comments. I'm not going to read them to you. We have copies for you of every single homeowner that sent in comments, but, but they're all saying "safety, safety, safety." One homeowner does own a boat and he said, "Seriously? How am I making that 90-degree turn with two trucks parked three feet in the road and I'm hauling my 25-foot boat behind me?" You know, I, that's, that was his concern. They talked about pets too. I mean, the dogs, when they, because we are a pet-friendly beach, the homeowner or the visitors bring their dogs and the dogs are running wild. I just, I can't imagine hitting one. Timeline. We obviously would love to push for this as soon as possible by March 1st before spring break starts and we get our spring breakers down there. And we think that this would also allow time for us to help re-educate the community, the community about new public parking locations, if that's what path we choose. We're supported with, obviously Sheriff Smith, the Fire Department, APSTA and Chip Morrison residents. And we just wanted to say thank you. Thank you commissioners for listening to our presentation. Hopefully by working together, we can help make beach parking safer for visitors and our homeowners.
Thank you, Ms. Nonda. I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
If you have it or we can see it on the picture. Where's the current access? Is it across on the other side of the street?
Yes, sir. So you see-
So the park is on one side and access is on the other?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So you can see the beach access is on the right side, so they have to cross that. I call it a 90-degree turn, a curve. It might be, I don't know, 85 or 75%, but it's still a blind spot because it's growth overturned there. There are rocks there on the side. And if I'm traveling with my grandson with a stroller and all the beach equipment, I've got to cross that curve to get to access. And there's cars coming and going both ways. They're turning around at the end of Chip Morrison, they're flying back down because they're 21-years-old and they want to go party on the beach with their friends and they're looking for a parking spot.
What happens is when it fills up, which is pretty quick, right, on a busy weekend, once they turn into the Chip Morrison to see if there's a spot, they're committed.
Yeah.
They're, uh, uh.
I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
Trust me, I get that.
And I just want to do a side note. My husband and I went to St. George Island last Monday and we drove around and the parking for the new wood walkways is beautiful. I loved it. And I would love to see something like that mirrored, especially here.
We're working on getting that at all of our boardwalks.
They were gorgeous.
Thank you. Any commissioners, y'all have anything?
I just want to make a comment. Nonda, do y'all have the picture of the no turnaround sign and all that Howard neighbors?
Howard just, and thank you very much for mentioning that. Mr. Neighbors came out two weeks ago and did put in a new sign that said, "No turnaround."
I don't think it got it anywhere.
I don't know if it was caught in the video.
Right.
It's right, it's right up there on Alligator Drive.
Right. And he also put up new speeding signs because the one speeding sign was stapled to a telephone pole. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, and I asked him to go over on the other side. I've got a coughing spell on me. Go over on the other side and measure back to where the property owner's property began and clean all the bushes down that way. But we've been kind of busy with all this water and stuff.
On that tape, yeah, for sure.
He hadn't got there, but.
Commissioner, have you, how, how wide is the right of way on that road, do you know?
On this road?
Yes.
I don't know. Or on Alligator Drive. I would say if it was on that road, it'd probably have to be a, at least a, I don't know, I don't think it's a 60. It don't look like it's a 60-foot right of way on, on Chip Morrison. Looks like it's letting that. Now probably Alligator Drive is there. But my only problem is that out there on Alligator Drive, Nonda, show it back where you got the blue thing, where it shows the parking thing.
The proposed, I think.
The proposed?
Yeah, yeah. Come on down. The proposed one, yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, right there. Along there, if you do it there, you've got people that owns property that if they ever want to build them a house or access that, then you wouldn't be able to do that.
We did address that.
If you're going to say something about it.
Well, I just want to address that because, yeah, that's, that's county easement. That property owner, his address is actually Chip Morrison Drive. All of us who live on Chip Morrison Drive have a driveway on Chip Morrison Drive. He has access on the south side of his lot. He actually owns two lots there.
But if he owns it that way, don't he have the right to move in that way? I'm just saying, I'm-
Yeah, and it's the same way for anybody who has crossed from like the multi-use path. I mean, they can put their driveway through the multi-use path.
I think that county access from either way? See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Can't, can't, the property owners, can't they access their property from either way?
Right.
Would it be Chip Morrison or Alligator Drive?
Right. Yeah, we could.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. But it's still, yeah, county easement. County owns it, so.
Yeah. We'll try to get something up by March 1st to try to see what we can do. Because I can say, when we did this, the sheriff at that time opposed Alligator Drive parking because of the traffic being so bad. And the sheriff at that time said that they were scared of the kids swinging open the doors and jumping out of the car. And see Chip Morrison is 15 miles, miles an hour compared to Alligator Drive is now 30.
The speed limit has been lowered, yes.
So.
But it's 30 across, it's 30 when you go to the second beach access and that's a straightaway. And that's on the opposite, that's on the north side of Alligator Drive. So those visitors have to physically cross Alligator Drive to get to that beach access. And they're, and people are going 30 through there, so.
Okay.
It seems like you'd start to have them slow down and realize that beach access, I mean, put aside beach accesses begin and let them know that the next, that's the first one, then you get to the second one, then you're going to get to the third one, to the S-curve. And that, that whole stretch is your beach access.
Beach access is very, very limited down there anyway. And, and they needed a place and this is where the safest place was, when we had Dan Rothwell in there. And, and I'll say this is the reason why the county went with this one. Although there's a lot of people, some people wants us to do that 100 parking spots down there. Uh-uh.
This has nothing to do with that.
And just let me just clarify something. I want to clarify something with the Alligator Point residents. MRD sent their statement at the last meeting, we got their report, which was a report that was needed because they got a grant to do some work on, in that area down there. If they ever decide, ever decide to fix that road, and that would be attaching Chip Morrison and all that and the realignment and all that, the parking places and all that, that report right there has the numbers in it that would be able to be used in the permitting. This board has several times, and I know since I've been on board, we've told y'all, we are not going to do beach renourishment. There's no time in the future. So when everybody gets on Nextdoor and say, "Hey, we're going," I'm just telling y'all, because I get relayed everything. I do not belong to Facebook, Nextdoor, I handle business straightforward. The next time, y'all can say, "The commissioners told us we were not going to have beach renourishment." So y'all, y'all hear me that message.
You got it. We will.
We will pass that on.
We don't mind at all.
Because this is one of the, this is one of the things that were brought up. One of the things that was brought up with your meeting with Michael Morong and Howard Neighbors was, one, go to the end of Chip Morrison where the road's laid out, make a big turnaround down there. Y'all didn't want that. Go down there and make the parking places where the 100. Y'all didn't want one of that. And there was a third thing too, and I can't remember. What was it, Nonda? There was a third thing y'all didn't want. That Howard said he could do for y'all.
Who said that we did not want it?
The 100 parking places.
Everybody said that.
No, well.
The 100 parking places.
Just about every resident said that.
No, I, well, did we just, did we discuss a turnaround at the end of Chip Morrison? And did we say?
Yeah, Howard said that at that meeting that he could do a turnaround and everybody's like, "No, we don't want it in Chip Morrison."
Yeah.
Was there at that meeting?
How I recall it is, they, they brought that up as far as a turnaround, but we just disregarded because we felt like that was very costly. And we didn't feel like the county would put money into that where this is a very doable, safe and least costly process to, to fix this issue.
Yeah, because he brought it up when it was discussed that it's a dead end right now. So, you know, he said he would do it.
And that road just drops off.
You've asked, you've asked this board to get back to you by March 1st and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I will say this, and again, I'm not trying to be any way about it, I'm just being straightforward. So we started all the conversation saying, "We don't want to spend money down there." And then when we talked about doing something that requires us spending money, that doesn't matter. We're trying to make it safe. But people are saying they don't want us to do it because we don't need to spend that money. I, you know, I don't get that mixed message.
And I apologize for that.
We're not, you know what I mean? We're not doing things to improve your area because, you know, we're not spending the dollars there. When there's discussion to spend the dollars there, well, no, that's not the best use of the dollars. You know, we're trying to make it safe. I don't understand that two-sided conversation.
Maybe it should be a two-way. Maybe we should fix the parking and then talk about making that turnaround.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
But, but, but it, over the years of doing this job, there have repeatedly been conversations I've had with not just residents from Alligator Point, residents across the county about what the county needs to do and how they're not doing it. And then we try to do it, "Well, that money's not, you know, the sheriff doesn't have those resources." They're the sheriff's department. Point blank period, there are things they can do that this board cannot do. So, and it will always fall to them. It'll always fall to them. Anything to do with parking or legal parking, anything to do with speeding, DUI, all these other things, they're the only ones that can enforce that. This board cannot do that. And I know there's been discussions, we've had several summers now, both during the summer seasons on Alligator Point and on the island, parking is an issue and we're trying to address that. All I'm trying to say is, as we try to address it, we can also hear the message that we're somehow squandering resources by trying to address it.
No, never. I would never imply that.
I totally apologize if that's how that was taken. You know, the road, the, the new road you guys have put in, I know it takes time to do that. And, and if you kind of divide it over the years, say that people waited for that right away, it, you get storms and things happen. I did not mean that by any means.
That's fine. It's my problem.
It was just, it was just, we thought that this could be something like, if you're saying, "Hey, we want to see it done by the new kids, the spring, so that we don't have the safety issues," that something that could be done, a turnaround, a roundabout, that would be great, but it still doesn't cure the problem of people making that left and going, "Oh, there's eight parking spots. 400 people came down today that wanted to see if there was one or eight room available."
Keep driving on those spots, right?
It's just crazy. And that's still not, it's not the safest thing.
Right, right.
I apologize.
No, you're good. It's not, no need to apologize.
I forgot about the road.
Just, just trying, just trying to, just trying to address everything, keep it on even, because listen, here's the thing. And I, I say this with complete confidence. The board that I got on when I started here is about the same board that you're addressing today.
Right.
So you don't, you know what I mean? We can just talk straight and try to work through-
And I was raised, and I think the Alligator Point's not the same either.
Right, no time.
As you well know, the roundabout, Chip Morrison, Stevens, Wash, and we've seen Wash and places that we've ever saw Wash before. The Burger Sanctuary wasn't there.
It was a good presentation, though, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Quick questions. With, with the current parking, how many, how many spaces is that designated for? Eight? Is that what you're saying?
The original plan in 2010 was eight. And they were parallel because they could-
That is for, it's still for parallel parking, correct?
Well, they-
What's it designated for? I don't care what they're doing. I'm just trying to figure out what's it-
I think they were supposed to be straight in, but they're parking-
Is it, is it, did they redesignate it as straight in or is it actually?
It has just, it has, it's just evolved over the years and the, and the visitors park however they choose.
What I was getting at is, is it a problem where we haven't had enough signage there saying, "Hey, this is parallel parking only?"
They don't want, they don't want no more signs.
Oh, we have a lot of signage, but we'll take more.
What I'm getting at is, is if you have, you know, if it's designated for parallel parking and you have the signage there and then somebody's just parking however they want to, that well there, you know, there's where the sheriff can say, "Hey, we fixing a stroke. Then we ticket, we're going to have them towed." You know, you see where I'm going with that?
Absolutely.
To me, it just doesn't look like, you know, there's enough information where it's at right there. And, and again, like Commissioner Sanders said, you're coming off a 15 mile an hour road into a 35. And, and, and I know we have other areas there, but I'm going to be honest with you, my mind goes straight to Mexico Beach. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, you know, you brought up the point where you've got small kids and you've got that blind spot, which I completely understand. But also you've got small kids out there on a 35 mile an hour zone where it's a lot, it's not, you don't have as much reaction time.
Correct.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to weigh it all up in my brain here. But my main thing was, is what we have right now, has it been adequately, I guess, advertised and enforced? Because that goes back to an issue like Commissioner, Chairman Jones is saying. We can, we can set guidelines, but we can't enforce it by ourselves, you know?
It's-
One of the things about the original parallel parking is, that makes sense to me, is that when you pull into Chip Morrison, let's say, and you want it to parallel park on the left side, that means you're going across the other lane to try to parallel park. Who does that? Well, I believe, also you had- On the same side of the road. Does that make sense? Well, I believe whenever it was first, the design, so to speak, when it was first done, we had, you had, you had two ways of getting in there. So obviously nature's had a different plan for what that looks like, but.
I, I think our basic, what we really want is help in making it safe. However y'all choose, we accept that and respect that decision because you know things that we don't know. And we're just, we're just wanted to present this problem, this issue.
I appreciate that. I was just trying to get clarity because- I appreciate, I was just trying to get clarity, because, um, myself, I'm, I'm doing history lessons here.
We welcome you to come down.
Definitely gonna be doing some history with you too. You know, so that's why I was trying to get an idea of, of actually how much, uh, parking is designated there, and how it's supposed to be parked. And, uh, and I'm also, I'm just curious how much easement we actually had there to begin with. Because I don't even know if we have enough to adequately park, you know, nosing in there, so to speak. It would probably have to be parallel, 'cause that's the reason why I'm assuming that whenever it was designed, it was for parallel. But, you know, I think if we can get some verification on that, but, but no, I was just trying to get some, you know, trying to get my mind wrapped around it as well, so I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, so I've been out in this area, and I actually saw the, the parking where some people were hanging off of the road. It is very dangerous, I will totally agree with that. Um, but the problem is, and I, I just looked up the property president's website, we don't, the county does not own that property there, so there is a question of how much easement we have before we start cutting trees. The other issue is, that's a, a gravel type, um, right of way. So my thing is, how can we mark the, or bifurcate the parking spots to people who are aware that it's parallel? 'Cause as Commissioner Amoson said, you could say, "Parallel park," and they're gonna park wherever they want anyway.
Right.
Um, but another thing, on another note, um, it was brought up that, and, and there's a new commissioner, um, on the board now. So, you know, the whole parking committee thing that you brought up, when we voted on that, is that something that you would like to continue? Would that be beneficial, uh, to have, 'cause Commissioner Bolt did at the time, to, to make this parking, uh, committee? So that we could potentially look at these long-term solutions? 'Cause I, I don't live in Alligator Point, I, I go down there, you guys do, you see the everyday things that are going on. Um, so I'm just wondering if that, you know, we didn't make a motion, and it was approved, if that's something that we wanna maybe look at, continue to do? And have meetings about these individuals, have meetings about what they could possibly do to facilitate parking in that area?
That's why they're here.
Yeah.
That's why, you know, that's really why they're here, uh, Commissioner Ward, is because I like for them to come to the board. Because I'm not, I'm gonna make the decision for them, but I got for the commissioners too. And they, they know me pretty well, if I tell you I'm gonna fix something, I'm gonna fix it. Now, I don't know if this can be fixed, because there's a parking problem all the way around. Because if you look back at the original thing, it was five parking space in two thousand and six. And you got to understand, although I have co, a lot of common sense. We have an engineer that's hired by monies with this county, that pays for monies with this county. And they come in and tell us what we need to do and what we don't need to do. Now, had I been the person to make the decision, I would've came in on the, uh, west side of Chip Morrison. And done it all the way around to the walk path, to the beach. That's how I would've done it. Look up there, you've still got it up there, haven't you, no?
Between.
Yeah, yeah. See, I would've done that instead of putting it on the other side. So there's, there's things that we might can do, um, but we'll have to see, see about the, the engineer and what he says. But it, I mean, there's things that we can do to eliminate that. And, um, and, um, anyway.
I think a good first step's gonna be to know how, how wide our right of way actually is.
Right.
Yeah.
'Cause that's the biggest concern is, they're pulling in some, it's, it's uneven, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Yep.
And we don't wanna, we do not wanna impose on the, uh, and, 'cause that's per, private property. We don't want that private property owner to get wind, people are utilizing his property, and, um, the county be in trouble for that.
Uh, we do have two people that want to speak publicly during this time. I don't know if they're here in the, in the building or on Zoom. First one is Steve Flynn.
Commissioners, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate it, and like to welcome our new commissioner, Commissioner Crowe. And I'm sure everybody knows me, I've been on Alligator Point for around forty-six years. I think I'm probably the oldest surviving resident out here. And I was the fire chief for about thirty years. I'd just like to clarify a couple things. Good, good presentation, a lot of good options. But as one commissioner pointed out, moving parking space from an area where drivers gonna be going maybe ten miles an hour. Out to a thirty mile an hour zone, this, it doesn't make any sense, safety-wise. And then there's always the other issue, and I've pointed this out to other commissions, or previous commissions. And that is, the, let's clarify after our apps done. They do not represent the majority of Alligator Point. They have maybe two or three hundred members. We've got eight hundred to nine hundred residents out here. So you have to be careful as to who you're listening to. My other question is, and in their presentation, they said they talked to twenty-five residents of Chip Morrison. How about the eight or nine hundred other people on Alligator Point, which are gonna have to drive by this proposed parking area? Which, I don't care how you cut it, and how many other parking areas we have on Alligator Drive, those are a risk. I think everybody's had somebody pulled out in front of them. Everybody's had maybe a child or a dog run out in front of them. So there's a lot of issues here. And the main issue, all of Alligator Point needs to be involved. Uh, and, and get the general consensus. But if you look at just pure safety, then the existing parking area far outweighs the proposed. I appreciate you commissioners, and that's all I have to say today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Uh, Mr. John Berry, I think he was also on Zoom. Those are the two I have.
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Can we go back to that, uh, slide, that, uh? Or you can use the one that's up there now. The dimensions are fifty feet, that's a fifty-foot roadway. It comes straight across from Harvard Drive. That was to have a beach access at the end of it, where you see, in that picture, you can see that beach access that is off at an angle on. That beach access right there is the one that had the walkover on private property. Um, and it had to be torn down. Uh, I bring this up because, first of all, I think to find your amount of space, you're gonna have to survey it. And also, survey it to the water's edge. If in fact that beach access can get to the water's edge because of the way the, uh, lots on Chip Morrison and on Alligator Drive, on both sides of Chip Morrison. Are vortexed in a manner that that beach access has a hard time reaching the water. Don't wanna muddy the water here, but if you were to do that, it would be fifty feet wide. And you'd have to take out some of those trees that are on the east side of Chip Morrison. So, uh, so that you could create a parking area by which they could actually do some parallel parking. Because right now, the roadway's twenty-five feet, you take, you've got five feet on the le, on the west side, twenty-five, thirty, you got twenty feet left. And you're gonna stick out on the, or close to it with bump, with trailer hitches on some of those trucks. So somehow or other, you're gonna have to get deeper in, make the, the right of way wider to, uh, put that parallel parking in there like you want. Second of all, there is no signs that say, "Parallel parking only." None whatsoever. We do have that sign that says, uh, "Dead end, no turnaround," goes down there. Uh, I wanted to bring this up because it does need to be surveyed, and see if in fact it really is the beach as accessible to the beach via this roadway. And that's all I have to say. I, I think moving it would cause, uh, a greater safety issue than leaving it where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Thank y'all for your good presentation, we really appreciate it.
Thank you again for listening to us, and happy holidays, and be blessed and safe, okay?
Yes, well, uh, because we do have a public hearing scheduled that should be starting now. Uh, we're going to go ahead and go past the PZNA report.
Yeah, we'll come back to PZNA, do you want a, a quick break before we get into the public hearing?
Yes, we'll do that, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, we'll come back for the public hearing. Franklin County County Commission is now back in session. We're going to skip some of our agenda and come back to it later with the PZNA board report because we do have two public hearings, the first of which was supposed to occur on or after 11 o'clock AM. We're going to start that first public hearing now. Turner Schuler, I turned over here.
All right, Commissioners, this is a duly-scheduled public hearing for the board to consider the request of Patrick Sparks that was made in early November for the board to schedule this public hearing to consider his request to abandon all of a platted alley, which is also known as Gun Street, located within Block Three East, St. George Island Gulf Beaches, Unit One, recorded in Platte Book Two, Page Seven, Franklin County, Florida. And that is what you're seeing on the screen now is a depiction of that area. Mr. Carrington forwarded that written request, and it was been an email, and that's how most communications happen these days, to me. And so I then presented that request to the board at your November 7th meeting, asking you, did you want to undertake the process of considering the abandonment of this alley slash Gun Street? Your, at least unanimous vote, possibly, or maybe majority vote. But in any event, there was a motion by the board to proceed. And so I came back to you, and what you're going to proceed on is just going through the statutory process, Chapter 336 Florida statute, so that you could consider whether or not to abandon all of the alley slash Gun Street that's located in the area that I've described to you. Once you made that decision to move forward on that written request, I came back to the board at your next meeting on November the 21st and presented to you the resolution required by Chapter 336, at which time you set a date, time, place certain for the public hearing, which is today, December 19th, at 11:00 AM. I've then scheduled, or excuse me, published the notice of the public hearing on November 30th in the Aflacola Times. I spoke with Mr. Moron and confirmed that the ad actually was in the paper because, you know, we'd had an issue with another public hearing recently where the ad was not published. And so the statute requires a 14-day advertising period instead of the usual 10-day advertising period, which publishing on November the 30th for a December 19th public hearing complies with that statutory period of 14 days publication in advance of the public hearing. Although the petition for the abandonment of all of the alley in Block Three East that I've described to you came from Patrick Sparks. He was acting on behalf of his company that's called, I think, Spartan SGI LLC. They do not own all of the lots within Block Three, but I don't read that as an impediment to their request that the board consider abandoning abandoning all of the alley within Block Three East. Up until yesterday, I had had no communication from the the property owner of the balance of the lots in Block Three, which is a corporation or an LLC. It's a company, not technically a corporation, but Turned Properties LLC. I've received a communication from them yesterday. It was in the form of an email forwarded to me from staff. And then I also received a phone call from an unknown number, which usually I don't answer, but it it was the day before a board meeting. And so for whatever reason, I picked up that number, and it was actually the principal for Turned Properties LLC. So Patrick Sparks LLC owns 17 of the 30 lots within Block Three East. Turned Properties owns the balance of the lots, or 13 lots, within Block Three East. And they have both, in writing, requested or agreed to the request for the abandonment. So we're here today. All the property owners have indicated that they want the board to move forward. I have explained to both of them via phone calls, and I plan on putting on the record today. I understand they're here via Zoom. But the, other than following the statutory process, which I think we have, and getting here in the correct procedure so the board can consider the request to abandon all of the alley in Block Three East. The other issue, not procedural, but substantive, is if you look at that depiction, you see the alley slash Gun Street right there on either side of the number three. Then you say Bay Shore Drive. And although Bay Shore Drive exists as a line on a drawing on a recorded plat, Bay Shore Drive does not physically exist. I don't think it can ever exist. It's a needle grass marsh is what it is. And so effectively, what that means is that those properties in Block Three that are abutting Bay Shore Drive, those are lots number one through 15 in Block Three East. Effectively, their only access along the public road would be along the dedicated alley, which was opened and named Gun Street. Maybe somebody knows when and why. I do not, but that's, you know, what it is today. So if the board were to abandon all of the alley slash Gun Street, that means that all of the platted interior lots in Block Three fronting on Bay Shore would no longer have access along a public road. And that is a substantive matter that concerns me. Anytime someone asks the board to abandon a public right of way is if it's abandoned, then someone loses their public access, then they potentially could sue the county for damages where regulatory taking of the property or the loss of public access. I have explained to both Mr. Sparks and Ms. Dedman, I think her name is, that if the board were to grant this request, that there would no longer be publicly maintained access to those interior lots between Third Street East, Second Street East, fronting on Bay Shore Drive. And that would be lots two through 14, in that they would then be responsible for providing their own access to those interior lots. And they've indicated they understand that. Ms. Dedman, I believe, sent an email out yesterday stating she said that I don't think Mr. Sparks, if he said one, I didn't receive it. But I do plan on putting that on the record today, if the board is ready to move forward with a public hearing. I don't have any further presentations, unless the board has questions for me. That would be appropriate time to take public comment.
I have a point of clarification, Turner Schuler. So you're asking about Gun Street. If you go back immediately to the west, that's on the other side of where Oyster Cove Restaurant slash Phineas, there's been several things there.
Yes.
Gun Street actually comes off of Pine and comes back, it comes back around and then hooks back. So that would be an extension of Gun Street is what, is how it's platted.
Okay.
You know, that's why, that's why it says Gun Street. The only thing I would ask, because I think it matters and needs to be asked. So what I was presented with when we first started having this discussion was that Mr. Sparks needed to have that area to be able to expand some sewer capacity or something for his business. But at the time that I was told that or reconsidered that, I didn't know Mr. Sparks owned 17 additional properties that are adjacent to his current property, where his business is at. So I mean, it's not like he doesn't own property there.
Correct. I will say, just in reference to, I don't think it's 17 lots in addition to where the business is. The business, I don't know exactly where it is, but it's essentially somewhere, again, Bay Shore Drive coming down to the alley, or all of those lots fronting on Bay Shore. On the right-hand side, the first lot is number one, abutting on Third Street East. So his business is somewhere right there near the intersection of Gun Street and Third Street East in that corner. Exactly how many lots that business takes up, I don't know, but it is part of the 17.
Okay. That's all I have. Anyone have any questions for Turner Schuler? All right, this time we'll take public comment. Is anybody in the room wishing to comment about this potential action either way? Anyone want it up? Please go forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Barbara Sanders. There was another map that was submitted by Mr. Sparks's company that shows that they own basically everything to the east from Third Street Pine Corner. And then the other person that had sent an email owns the other half. So Spartan Inc. or LLC, Spartan SGI LLC, as of November, now owns everything that was in that red hash mark attachment that they had sent earlier. So it's lots one through 10 on Bay Shore that doesn't exist, and lots 30 through 24 on Pine Avenue. So they do have plenty of other room. I didn't really ever get an official reason for the request. And if it is to expand sewer, I think it's just what you said, Mr. Dunn. He has plenty, that LLC, that corporation, now has plenty of property to put their extra sewage on. So I submitted written objections, and I know I can trust all y'all that you've read them. Some of them are procedural, whether Mr. Schuler and I agree on whether it's properly noticed when you have additional petitioners the day before. We can skip over those details. But what I wanted to add to my written comments is in your resolution, as drafted by Mr. Schuler, if you have it in front of you, it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that this abandonment is in the best interest of the public." So you have to make a positive finding that giving up this public land for free benefits the public generically. I think the burden is on the two petitioners to give you positive proof of that. Without a written petition, without any sort of reasons or rationale, whether it's sewer or, I believe the one person said, "We just would love to have it so we can build a bigger business there," you know, "fits into their land use." How does that benefit the public? It certainly benefits the two developers. If anytime someone gives a land away for free, it's going to help the person who's the beneficiary of that gift. But how, what is the proof that this benefits the public in general? The burden is not on me as a member of the public to come in and tell you why you shouldn't do it. I gave you some ideas. I don't like the fire trucks and first responders having to drive into a a dead end with no turnaround. We know how that works. But it is, so you should not put on the public the burden to prove a negative. I shouldn't have to come in here and tell you why not to do it. They should have to come in and tell you why to do it. You haven't got that proof, so in addition to my written comments, please consider this, turn it down. And any future requests to turn, give away county land, just like you may need the end of Chip Morrison someday on Alligator Point. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name for the record.
Mason Bean, St. George. Commissioner Coon, welcome aboard. Thank you for serving. I think it's important to keep all public land. The Sparks family do a great job on St. George. We really appreciate them and their business. But at all costs, the public needs to keep those lands. I just want to refer back to the abandonment of Gander Street years ago. Now there's a house on it. The county got fooled on that. Also, I think when the state acquired Unit Four and all those platted roads, the county retained ownership. I hope, I think I'm right with that. Anyway, keep those lands open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room before we go to those attending by Zoom? Is there anyone that wants to comment publicly? And I know we will. Turner Schuler, help me make sure, keep me right. We will have a time to hear from the petitioners, correct?
Yes.
This is public comment. Anybody wanting to comment publicly during public comments?
Actually, this is Mr. Sparks right here.
We're going to give them a time in a minute. We're trying to do the public first. Make sure we take all public comments.
Okay, so what the chairman is asking for besides Mr. Spark and the other petitioner, oh, excuse me, Ms. Strattman, that if anybody else would like to speak on this before we go to the two petitioners?
Public comments, yes.
On the public comments. The chairman, no other hands raised. It's just Mr. Sparks and Ms. Strattman. She said in a card to speak. Mr. Chairman?
Really wasn't required because it's a public hearing. Yes, sir.
No further public comment. I just wanted to clarify something for the record. It is not my position, nor have I represented, that the other property owner, Turned Properties LLC, is a petitioner in this matter. The only petition that the board has received was the electronic communication from Mr. Sparks in early November. Now, I did receive a communication, but I would, from the principal of Turned Properties LLC, but I would not consider them to be a petitioner.
All right. Now we can go, we're past public comments, so now we can hear from the petitioners.
With the comments, the statement that Attorney Schuler just made, would you like me to go to Ms. Strattman first, since she's not considered a petitioner? And then we go to Mrs. Sparks?
Yep, that's fine.
We'll be the only, okay. I'm going to go to her. Hopefully, this, she's on twice, so I'll hope that this is the one where she is able to talk. She would unmute. Ms. Strattman, I'm trying to get you to unmute. You're logged on twice. Okay, she's on mute, yes. There we go. Yeah, you got the log off of the other one. You'll create an echo.
Yes, I just turned off one. Can you hear me okay now?
Great.
Great, thank you. This is Jennifer Strattman. My home is 956 West Gorey Drive on the island. And of course, I also own the Black Marlin property, Oyster Cove property. And I have a total of 16 lots there, 13 of which are in this Unit One, Block Three. So I would like to support Mr. Sparks's request for the abandonment of the road as it relates to his property. Of course, I will also be asking the board at the appropriate time, I don't know how, if it could be incorporated. If not, I'll do it separately. But I'd like to also request that it be extended to the end of my property as well. And I know that someone had talked about public benefit. There are some plans to work with the property that we have to improve that property. And part of that is trying to figure out where we could put a splash pad for children to play on so that when parents come to enjoy the property for the retail aspects of it, that they would be able to have their children play and they could watch them while they play. And we're kind of out of room with the current plan that we have for the things that will help us pay for the cost of this land. So with that, I would like to say that we support it, support Mr. Sparks's application, and hope he will approve it, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Sparks?
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. With, just to clarify, just a few aspects and to get to a couple of the questions raised on the benefit of the community. First, this Gun Street, it's, the ones that are aware of this property, it dead ends at Patty's Raw Bar in our parking lot, Raw Bar in our parking lot, and it runs back towards the end of the lot. With that said, this is, this alley has not been ma, I ran Eddie Teaches. I opened Patty's Raw Bar ten years ago. We've acquired the seventeen lots over time, and point is, this property has not been maintained. This alley has been overgrown for the public's benefit. The SGI Fire Department, ten years ago, unofficially abandoned it within their own rights, not within the county commissioners, however, not properly. But you can't drive an emergency vehicle down this road. You can't drive a police car down the road. A golf cart barely can get down this alley without this, without trees hitting it. There's, my dumpster has been sitting in the middle, our dumpster and then other people's stuff over time on this county, on this county alley, has been not maintained. Potholes, you know, when they, when they come and the county maintains the road, they've never came down this alley. Like you said, folks that are familiar with this piece of property, it's, it's, it's very misleading when you say road or a street. It is a, it is a dirt alley that a golf cart can barely pass through at this time. Now, maybe thirty years ago, it might have been more of a passable road, but as long as I've been there in my lifetime on the island, over twenty, twenty-five years, this has become, this is, this is basically a trail that now runs through the property. And just for our purpose of this abandonment and our request for, for the consideration for the abandonment, is basically for the, we've done everything in my restaurant with the health codes, with the health department, with engineers, to properly dispose wastewater water onto St. George Island. We've done everything the county's asked, everything the health commissioners asked, and what they have requested is us to, we, for that, for us to get a flow calculation to improve our septic, and I say improve, but there's a lot of miscommunication out there, a lot of rumors that we're building, that there's going to be some big septic field, and all, everything, basically, the whole, that whole lot's going to become a septic field. That is completely false. This area is being used in consideration with the request for a reserve flow for our current septic field. So, just to make that clear, with that said, we're getting to the point with to, I believe that the county, over the years, has encouraged and supported, you know, responsible property owners on St. George Island maintaining and upgrading their septic systems for the purpose of the health and safety of the island, our bay that we all rely upon, you know, that we, that we cherish the bay, love the bay, rely on this bay. So, we're properly trying to dispose the growth of the island, the commercial area, in the proper ways, through the proper means, and not going in other ways and pulling something over your eyes. So, and with honesty and sincerity, we came to you guys in trying to get this alley abandoned, which it is obviously an alley, like I said, and I'll leave it there, but we really appreciate y'all's time and effort in this, and thank you for your, for your time, everybody. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Sparks, hold on just a second.
I have a question for Mr. Sparks. I did not ask Ms. Stedman, because she did send an email and writing, so we do have the, her understanding that if the board were to abandon all of the alley, that her interior lots that front the alley and Bay Shore Drive would lose their public access, and she would be responsible for providing her own public access. And Mr. Sparks, the same question to you. You understand that if the board were to abandon the alley, that your interior lots in Block Three East that front on both Gun Street and Bay Shore Drive would lose their public access, and you would be required to provide your own access to those lots at your own expense?
Yes, sir. That's not, that's no issue.
That's it for me.
Sanders, do you have something?
I do. I mean, I guess it's my way of rebuttal, because once again, my objection to the procedure is I never know going in what it is I'm supposed to be addressing, because no one's, I'm used to being in court where you tell me what you want, and then I get to respond, and then you get to respond. So, I drove down this alley road, whatever you want to call it, last Thursday. You can drive all the way from Second Street right, straight down in front of Patty's. Now, Patty's does use it for their parking, but it's not theirs. I mean, you can drive through there, and then you turn up and go to Third Street. Third Street dead ends beyond what is now Genie's Journeys. So, it's open. It can be improved, as I said. Just ask Mr. Neighbors to come down with his road grader and road grade it like you do all the other roads on St. George Island, and it's really not much to it. The dumpster does not obstruct driving from one end to the other. I walked down it on another day, just as I wanted to go for a walk on the public right of ways of St. George Island. The issue is not somebody has to follow the rules to protect the bay. We all have to follow the rules to protect the bay. The issue is that private developers don't want to use their own private property to grow their businesses. They're asking to use public property. That is not a public benefit. Splash pads are great. Put it on your property and encourage your customers to come spend money at your business. You pay taxes. That might be a benefit. But I can think of things on everybody's property that's a public benefit. We can't look at it like that. What does this do for all of the people in the entire county? Appalachia, everywhere. Caribou. It doesn't do anything. So, I ask that you deny it.
Thank you, Sanders. Turner Shuler, did you have anything additional?
I'm sorry?
Did you have anything additional? I'm just making sure you were.
Oh, yes, I wanted to say, Mrs. Sanders is correct on the best interest of the public standard. When I was doing my research and prepared the resolution, the case laws abundantly cleared that there must be a finding that the abandonment of the public right of ways is in the best interest of the public. In fact, there was some abandonment, and I can't remember the name of the case now, sorry, but I did read one case where there was an abandonment that did not have the accompanying finding by this board of in the best interest of the public. It was challenged, and the court, you know, reversed the board's decision because that finding was not present.
Oh, see, look at that. I don't remember the name, but I found it.
Okay. Good man. I will say, and I appreciate all the input today, and I appreciate what Mr. Sparks and Ms. Stedman, or any property owners are trying to do with their property or grow their business. I do appreciate that. However, to use the words that I didn't like at the time, because I knew what he was getting at before they ever said it, of the SEC Commissioner, when he was on College Game Day, the day before they snubbed FSU from the playoff. One is not like the other. St. George Island is unique in every way. There are any number of county-owned properties, most of which are eight-foot easement to access the Gulf beaches in between every property on the south side of the island. I can foresee, as the commissioner of this district, if we start giving away property, they're going to want us to give it all away. So, I cannot vote in favor of this. It's not against anybody. It's just what's good for the public, and it is public land.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment as well, and nothing against, I appreciate, can appreciate Mr. Sparks and Ms. Stedman's request, but I agree, how do we know that the splash pad's going to go there? How do we know that it's going to benefit the public? If we do this, we're going to set a precedent, I feel, because what's not shown on this map is another couple of blocks that reach out all the way to the end on the other side of First Street, that actually Collins Vacation Rental has a place. So, who's to say that they may not come back after the fact and ask for the same favor? So, you know, I see both sides, but I have to say that if we start this, it's going to start a precedent with everybody else wanting to come try to petition to this board to get public land. That's just my personal opinion.
I believe the same thing. I believe, I believe public, public money buys public lands for public use, and that property is public, and it needs to remain public. That's the way I feel.
Well, I disagree with all y'all. And as usual, but I mean, I could see some public good out of that, yeah. I mean, we can create some jobs. You're talking about an alleyway, basically, and it is a trail. I frequent there quite a bit. I would lean more towards a trail, or you can scratch your vehicle up going down through there. But, well, I mean, you know, tado, tado. But my thing is, is, you know, it could create jobs. I mean, obviously, they've got a plan there, like the lady said, with shops, splash pad. Who's going, I mean, you just really want the public to be like, well, we can just walk down the middle of all this. I mean, they own both sides of it. What's the big deal? I don't, I don't, I don't get it. I mean, I'm a new commissioner, so I'm just, I'm just curious about that. I mean, how does that affect the public in any way? I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's kind of ridiculous in a way. I mean, they own both, both sides of the alley. Obviously, and just like Attorney Shuler said, that he had a discussion with Turned Property, and that if they ever, you know, whatever easements they have to come up with, and also Mr. Sparks just said it would, you, they would submit their own easement issues or whatnot. I mean, if we abandon that part. Emergency personnel, they've got on the Second Street to take a left right there and go down to where the other dwellings are. You're not cutting, it's not a dead end like it's being presented. How is that a dead end? If anything, it's more of a dead end now because it runs right into a restaurant. I mean, obviously, there is an easement there that hadn't been observed, but to me, I just, I feel like that we should approve it, but I guess we're fixing to vote on it. But anyway, that's all I have.
Well, as a new commissioner here, I went out there, I went out there yesterday after my new employee orientation, and tried to, you know, look at, look at this map right here. I believe I was in the right area, but to be able to solely vote on this fairly, I need to go look at that property with either you or Michael. So, my motion is to table it until I can go look at that property with someone.
Do we have a motion to table?
I'll second that, just so we can get, let the new commissioner get a little bit more familiar with this, because again, he's new, so I'll second that motion. I think it's only fair that he can make an informed decision.
That's what we want to do for the new commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, if you're going to table a public hearing, it must be tabled to a date, time, and place certain, so that the public is aware of when you will be bringing this matter back up. So, your options would be the next meeting, frankly, but that is up to the board.
That's about how you do that.
That's going to be a short meeting anyway. Yeah, we've got plenty of time.
Because the sixteenth, we have a workshop as well. Remember that.
Whatever, I'll do whatever y'all do.
Does that give you ample time to advertise?
We do have to set a time.
The second?
We would not necessarily be re-advertising. That's the purpose of, it's already been duly advertised, but if you're going to table a public hearing, it must be tabled to a date, time, and place certain. And frankly, depending on what decision the board makes on when you want it to be brought back up again, you know, I'm not required to re-advertise, but I may do it. But the only thing that's legally required is tabling to a date, time, and place certain.
Let me make sure that my recommendation would actually be on the sixteenth of January at eleven o'clock, not so much the second, because here's the issue. Right now, I would discuss the second later. That might be a really short meeting, so if I say eleven o'clock on the second, you'll be sitting here for quite some time, possibly, waiting to, for eleven o'clock to come. So, I mean, if.
Do it at nine thirty.
That's what I'm saying, is it has to be eleven?
Oh, we don't, we don't. I was just saying, if you know, wanted to wait till the sixteenth, but that's.
I think the sooner the better, because I don't want this to delay another couple weeks, just for the, for the petitioner.
Or we can do it at nine thirty on the sixth, on the second. That's what everybody's good with.
Yeah, I think, you can, you can get out there with somebody off about the second. Can't you?
And Mr. Chairman, if by chance, we get flooded with something on the second, which I don't think anybody would perceive, we can always just adjust it like we did today and address this, then come back around. I was just saying, let's just get it done.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so.
So, do you want to include in your motion to, to hold, to table it until the second of January at nine thirty?
Yes.
In the county commission meeting room, thirty-four Forbes Street, Appalachia Cola, Florida.
Which one? What's the three what?
Thirty-four Forbes Street. We have to date, date, time, and place.
Okay. And do you amend your second?
Mouthful. Yes, because the chairman, I can amend my second.
Any other discussion before we vote?
No, they're tableing it. They voted against.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's an answer. So, we will take this matter again up on.
January second.
January second at nine thirty.
Because I'll tell you what.
Mr. Sparks, you're still.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes, no, so I was just saying, whatever, whoever you're speaking to, we're hearing because you're on muted. So, and I heard you, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to clarify, Attorney Shuler to clarify that we didn't vote against it, we're just tabling?
No, no, I got you. So, I was, I got, I'm walking through the house. I got five kids screaming at me and a wife, so that, my apologies. I didn't know I was on muted still.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your consideration, guys, and we'll, I guess we'll, we'll talk to you guys on the second, as it sounds like, at nine o'clock?
Nine thirty. Yes, sir.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, thank you.
All right. And then we're on to the second public meeting?
Yes, sir.
Our public hearing.
Yeah, let me find it, all of this.
Come on, man.
All right. The second public hearing is for the board to consider the adoption of a ordinance which increases the voting requirements if the board were to make any changes to, or, excuse me, to make any increases in the height restriction, which presently sits at forty-seven feet. There is currently embedded within your zoning code, what we refer to as Section four sixty-two, which has exceptions to the forty-seven-foot height restriction. I have included Section four sixty-two in my, yes, in my report to the board, which contains the draft ordinance, and I'm not going to read all of Section four sixty-two of the Franklin County Zoning Code, but did want to explain to the board and the public that this, if the board should adopt the ordinance, increasing the voting requirements to require a supermajority before you can increase the current forty-seven-foot height restriction, that ordinance increasing the voting requirements would still be subject to the current exceptions to your height limit. For example, there are things dealing with chimneys, cooling towers, elevator bulkheads, fire towers. Those are already existing exceptions to your height restriction, so it seemed to make sense to continue those so that you don't have to come back at some point and then change this ordinance to embed those, those currently existing exceptions to the height restriction. I know I've provided draft copies of this ordinance to the board on several prior meetings, and you have a copy of that ordinance here. If the board has no questions for me, now would be an appropriate time to take public comment.
No other questions for Turner Shuler? Basically, what this is going to do is, upon adoption, change it to where it had to be at least a four-fifth vote to change the requirement?
Yes, a supermajority, four-fifths. I said supermajority, but we actually have some county commissions that have more than five members. In our case, supermajority, it would require a four-fifth vote of membership to make, if you adopt this ordinance, to make any future changes, increasing the height, subject to the exceptions that are currently embedded in Section four sixty-two of Franklin County Zoning Code. Ordinarily, most of your ordinances are adopted by a simple majority. In your case, three out of five. This would increase that to require four out of five. And frankly, that will be the issue when you consider the amendment to the spending plan for the TDC next month. The statute requires a four-fifth vote to make any changes to the spending plan for the TDC. So, I mean, there, there's some precedent required on supermajority.
All right. Any questions for Turner Shuler before we proceed to public comment? Commissioners? All right. At this time, we're on the floor for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Mason Bean, we all know that this county remains under assault from these new developers and everybody coming in here. I hope you'll keep this as strong as it can be. I want to go back to nineteen eighty. Any waterfront property had to be a hundred foot wide, but we made little changes, and we made little changes, and now we have forty-foot wide lots. So, I hope you'll keep it strong and tough and protect our wonderful county. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, and welcome to our newest commissioner. My name is Diane Brewer. I'm a resident of Appalachia Cola for ten years, and I've owned property there for. and I've owned property there for twenty years before that. I am in favor of in, of the increasing the voting approval process to, to make it harder to in, to increase the height limit in Franklin County. We all moved here because of the appeal of Franklin County's low and slow environment. I would hate to see that changed. The Appalachia Cola's height ordinance is, is lower, and I don't want to see any increase in the county that would make the future of Franklin County resemble Panama City. So thank you very much for considering increasing the voting majority on this ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Barbara Sanders. I also am in favor of making it harder to build tall buildings. And I apologize for not having done my homework on this like the previous hearing, because I wasn't opposed to this. But the one thing that's always confused me about Franklin County is where do we start measuring from? Thirty-five feet from grade. I sometimes hear that. I don't really know what grade means. A lady the other day said crown of the road, which is how I think DOT measures things. I don't know. We have a fill ordinance that has been, it's floating around somewhere, I guess. But I've always asked the hypothetical question, if you fill in something ten feet, do you start from that ten feet, and then you go up thirty-five feet, which is then forty-five feet? So it's a math question for me. I wish I would ask your staff to definitively say where we start measuring from. And then I totally agree, don't go any higher than that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? This is the time for public comment. Sir, is anyone attending that's in?
Mr. Covington does. I allow him to talk right now.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's David Covington, St. George Island. I just wanted to, I wanted to welcome Commissioner Croons to the commission. Congratulations on your, on your election. And also, I wanted to say thank you and Merry Christmas to all of you for, for me. One question I have is, when we say four out of five, this means that, like in the situation with Commissioner Lockley, if he's not there, so we're meaning that it can just be any of the four, and if you have one left, if one that's not there, it's not, they're, they would not be voting on that. I just want to make sure we got clarification on that. And, go ahead.
I think it would be three plus one, sir. If you only had four, it had to be the majority.
Okay, I understand.
Correct.
Also, I just wanted to reemphasize what Barbara Sanders said also. In this new proposed ordinance, do we have specification, because there's so many questions about it, about where this is being measured from, whether it's grade or not? I don't know, because I haven't seen a new ordinance, or the proposed ordinance.
No, this proposed ordinance is addressing specifically a, the, the way that we could ever change, the county commission could ever try to address, modify, or change the current height restriction in Franklin County. The other thing that you're referencing, Ms. Sanders referenced, is going to be handled part and parcel with what we're working on for a fill ordinance that works for everyone, that we're still working on.
Okay, I got you. I appreciate your time. Thank you, and Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
If anybody else attending by Zoom would like to speak, please indicate by raising, using the raise hand feature. Thank you. Commissioner, it's all the hand, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or discussions you want to discuss about this?
Mr. Chairman, I just think that this is very important as we move forward for our county. Our county's growing by leaps and bounds, and I have to agree with everything that was said here today in terms of trying to keep that aesthetic that we currently have versus going to Panama City Beach, and you can't see the water because of everything being above the forty-seven feet. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve this as it's, as it's, as it's written. The new, I want to make it stricter. I, I make a motion to approve this.
Yes.
I second.
There were a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders to adopt this ordinance that would require a four-fifths vote of the commission to try to change our current height restrictions in the county. Any discussion before we vote?
I'd just like to say, I wish we could take the height back down to twenty-seven foot. But we can't, we can't. But we're trying to be realistic on it. But this will ensure that before, before anything can be changed on that height, that pretty much everybody on this board has to agree with it, basically, three plus one. So, I mean, I think it's a good thing. That's what we're known for. We're known for being able to walk, to, to drive all the way from one end to the other and still see the water. That's all, that's our, that's our, that's our greatest gift in this county, I think. It's one of the greatest gifts to our people and our children, but, but they, and I think it's beautiful. And, but anyway, that's, that's what I said. So my, my motion, I mean, my second goes with Commissioner Ward's motion.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. So that does it for our second public hearing, correct? That's it for the public hearing?
Yes, sir. That concludes the public hearings.
All right. Commissioners, do y'all want to take a five-minute recess and come back and try to go through this? Or what do y'all want to do? It is twelve o'clock.
I'd say we recess and just try to hammer her out.
All right, let's do it. Recess.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. We're going back on our agenda to the Planning and Zoning Adjustment Board Report. Ms. Bankston, you are up.
All right, so first I have for you guys. First I have for you guys a variance. This is a consideration for a request for a variance to encroach 15 feet into the 25-foot setback to construct a single-family residence and abstain from approaching into the rear 50-foot wetland setback at the property located at 1915 Indian Harbor Road, St. George, Florida. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, uh, Garlic Environmental Associates Agents for James and Gail Tunnel, the applicants. So, I've been very tedious about reviewing variance applications. This one, they, this has already been approved. The site plan that you're looking at right now, originally we thought it was 1,500 square feet, but we were corrected that it's 1,250 that they're putting into their building square footage, minimum heated and cooled square footage. I feel like even if they were at 1,000 square feet, they still would have to approach it in some way in order to build on that, that property to stay out of the wetlands. But because they're staying out of the wetlands, they can build, you know, 1,250 without an issue. They have already received their approval from the plantation board for this, and the board did recommend approval for this variance request.
Ms. Courtney, can I ask you a question? The, uh, just looking at the way it's laid out on the drawing, the 15-foot, are they talking about the closest where the corners are?
No, so the, the 25-foot setback is on the front is where they're asking for the 15. On the side, the plantation already has a 15-foot wetl, I mean, 15-foot setback on the side. Ours is 10, so they don't need any variance on the side. They're not encroaching any more than the normal Franklin County setbacks.
I guess what I'm trying to clarify, though, I'm just looking at the way it's laid out. So, down on the bottom side, that's a road, correct?
Yes.
And then on the left side, that's a road? Or is that just a property line?
I think that's just a property line.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
So, what's gonna be on that very front corner that's closest to the roads gonna be?
Yes, right here.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify.
And Mr. Chairman, you, you stated this is in the plantation, so they have their own rules and regulations and right of ways for roads and things?
Yes. And they've already reviewed it and approved it. This right here is their approval letter here.
And the BOA, Mr. Chairman, sorry, the BOA and the P and Z Board approved it as well?
Correct.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, the second one I have on my agenda is for 4050 St. Teresa Avenue. Let me get over to the site plan here. Can y'all see that pretty good?
Nope.
So, this is a consideration of a request for a variance to construct, in addition, 5.58 feet into the side 10-foot setback on the property in Cochran's Beach, 4050 St. Teresa Avenue. Request submitted by Mike Thornall, the applicant. So, they are proposing 1,700 square foot addition. I tabled it at the last month's meeting or meeting before, because I didn't feel like they're, they were just trying to set up their building to match the existing, because the existing home was built back in the seventies and it was already encroaching. I didn't feel like we needed to increase that encroachment with a new addition, so they met with staff on numerous occasions, and this is what we agreed upon. So, the only thing that, that will be encroaching into the setback is their stairway that leads to the new addition, because this is their back entryway to their existing home, and their elevator shaft. So, the board did a motion to approve.
Ms., Ms. Courtney? Just, just asking, just to clarify, this is not something that's an after the fact, they're asking for this before they do it, right? Okay.
No, sir.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, Commissioner? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Next, we have some critical shoreline applications for you. The first one?
Hold on just a second before you start. So, Commissioners, we can do all these as one motion, or we can pull them out if y'all have got any you want to discuss separately? I want to discuss item D separately. So, if we do want to make a motion, we can do the other three and then do D separately. Is everybody else good with that, or you have something else you want to talk about? All right, please proceed, Ms. Courtney.
All right, so we want to do the three? Okay, so the first three, I have 1911 Highway 98 West, a consideration to construct at 840 square foot, single-family dock with two uncovered boat slips located at 1911 Highway 98 West in Carabelle. Submit, the request was submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Agent for Anthony Dipola. The second one is 1227 Walkin' Drive, consideration of a request to remove an existing single-family dock and construct a new single-family dock that consists of a four-by-347-foot walkway, an eight-by-20 terminus, and two other uncovered boat slips located at 120, 1227 Walkin' Drive, St. George Island. Also, the, that was request, was submitted by Garlic Environmental as well for Gary Bogman. And then the third one, C, is 2164 Highway 98. They are asking for a single-family dock that consists of a 219-by-four boardwalk, a 10-by-16 terminus, and one boat slip. And that was also submitted by Dan Garlic Agent for James Houghtman.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. All of the staff approved, BOA and P and Z Board approved this?
Correct, and on all of these, they all had received their state and federal permits.
Okay, and I just want to make a note that one of them is replacing.
Correct.
So, they already have one already, and they're replacing, so I can appreciate that they are going through the right process and procedure and not just try to do it kind of under the radar. I'll make a motion to approve these items, and I have a, you have a report coming up?
Yes.
I want to talk to you about something on that, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve these.
Here we have a motion to approve A, B, and C under number 11, by Commissioner Ward. Do you have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five by vote.
Okay, so D is. Consideration of a request to remove an existing dock and construct a 1952 square foot single-family dock that consists of a two, 236-by-four access pier, a 12-by-16 terminal platform, a 12-by-12 covered jet ski, and a 16-by-42 covered boat slip with a lift located at 1988 Highway 98 West. A request submitted by Florida Environmental and Land Associates Agent for Harry Marsh, applicant.
Ms. Courtney, I have a question.
Okay.
Does this property have a house?
Yes, there, the, the property has a home on the property.
I wanted to make sure of that, because I noticed in the description that they were asking for a boat lift, which would require power.
Correct.
That's why I want to pull it and talk about it before we talk about approval. I'm good with that. I just wanted to answer that question. All right, pleasure to the board. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's also unanimous.
So, we'll have to do these separately, don't we?
Yes. Don't we have to do sketch plats separately, or no?
Sketch and plats don't have to be separate?
No, the, I was looking at the agenda. It says you can approve all of the sketch plats in one motion, just like with the docks, unless a Commissioner wants to pull an item and discuss it separately.
So, is there any one Commissioners that y'all want to pull out, or any you want to pull out at all? All right, we'll proceed, Ms. Courtney. We'll consider all three.
All right, so the first.
We'll consider all three.
Okay, so the first sketch plot is a consideration of a sketch plot request to subdivide two lots located at 1808 Highway 98 West McKissick Beach Subdivision, Carabelle. Request submitted by Jackie Etheridge, Agents for Jacqueline Quackenbush and Janice Davis. You guys have already seen this one prior to. It's just with the county attorney's.
Recommendation.
Recommendation. He wanted us to come. This is the only way you guys can subdivide legally.
So, now we can vote on it?
Hold on, let me do the second, the other two first.
But she can answer the question.
I was just waiting for, like, like at home, permission to speak.
You can answer my question.
But, but, yes, Commissioner, I mean, it, it's not that the board didn't want to help the applicant as originally submitted, but I, I, I looked and looked. I couldn't find any peg to hang a hat on that said the board could just change the legal description on unplatted lands. So, the only option that I could find that was available was to go through the small plat process, which means that, that you can collapse both the, the sketch plat and the final plat approval into one. And then frankly, all, all three of these are fall in the same category, where you're going to do sketch and final all in the same meeting.
Yeah, I don't have no problem.
Go ahead and read the last.
All right, so the second one is a consideration of a sketch plot request to combine two lots located at 1408 Dogwood Drive, St. George Island. That was submitted by Thurman Roddenberry Agent for Randall Drohl. And the third one is 1301 Curlew Way. Those are a combination of, of two lots, 2.17 acres. At 1301 Curlew Way, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida, request submitted by Thurman Roddenberry Agent for James Graves Jr., Linda Graves, and Larry and Nancy Edwards, the applicants. The board, all motion to approve these for sketch plot approval with no issues.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion to approve A through C, and especially A, and Jackie better be listening. I don't need it. Jackie.
She's right there.
She's the real estate person. I'm talking about the girl. The two sisters are finally getting their land situated, and this is a good thing. And, oh, and I'll make the motion to approve these three items.
I'll second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, next we have these same three for final plat application. I'll just mention the addresses. Final plat for 1808 Highway 98 West, 1408 Dogwood Drive, and 1301 Curlew Way.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Courtney, we now move to your report.
Yes, so. So, the first thing on, uh, on the agenda, Jeremy Putnall, that was his first meeting. He did an amazing job. He really likes it, so I think he's gonna be a great fit. We did a couple of things there. We appointed David Duncan as chairman. Our Alex Gramonski, who was at-large for Noah's District, has resigned effective. He resigned effective at the end of the meeting. So, we've got a couple of vacancies that we need to fill. We have a District Three and then an at-large that needs to be filled.
If I could, actually, I was waiting until, you know, Commissioner Kroom had seated and we could move on, because it was probably discussed at the next meeting or maybe the one, second meeting in January. So, what we actually should do, so the, Mr. Duncan actually is in District One now. So, what we probably should do is we move Commissioner, sorry, Mr. David Duncan, the chairman, to at-large, and then the two seats that would have to be filled would be your seat and Commissioner Kroom's seat. That's the way, that's what we really need to do.
I think that's a good idea.
You can do it that way. You can make, I mean, either which way works. Or you could put Mr. Jim at large and move David to District One. It doesn't matter neither way.
Do, Mr. Chairman, do they themselves have a recommendation? Is that something that we need to?
For the P and Z Board?
Yeah.
No, I really don't, um, that's, that's your decision where, you know, where they sit and stuff.
It don't matter to me one way or another.
Well, I like, I like seeing the Commissioners pick, you know, because they know the, they know their people so good in their district. And, and it's like Jessica probably knows somebody, and Anthony probably knows somebody that might be just the thing that we need for the Franklin County Plan and Zoning Board.
Commissioner Kroom, all you have to do, like the story they told this morning, what Commissioner Lock, you voluntarily told somebody.
Just go sit at the gas station and wait.
That's what you do, you voluntarily tell. When you voluntarily tell somebody.
But yeah, I'm good with that. We can, we can have that discussion in future meetings.
I finally got my member.
If you're changing a member from a district rep to a at-large rep, that does require a board.
I should have a motion to that effect.
Well, is that something on the agenda? Is that something we do?
We'll call for public comment if you don't, if you don't mind.
That's fine. There's no problem. We can do it now. I mean, it, they're already servants, so. So, do we have a motion? What do you want, seeking a motion to move?
Motion to move Mr. Duncan.
Mr. Duncan from represent, from District Three seat to be at-large?
District Five.
District Five to at-large, and then that will, then, yes, that's basically the motion. That will free up the seats that in, that Commissioner Kroom and Commissioner Ward would need to fill those in the future. So, it's basically one motion to move him from five to at-large.
Can I ask a question first? I'm good with that. On our county website, doesn't it all reflect Mr. Duncan as at-large?
I don't know that. I'll check.
It could be.
Yes, if, if it's wrong, we'll fix it.
All right, so we make a motion to approve that, by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Since this is on the agenda, anyone in the public wanting to comment about this before we make a decision, before we vote?
Anyone online attending via Zoom would like to comment on this, please indicate by selecting the raise hand feature. No hands raised, sir.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, Ms. Courtney?
Yes, I have just a, a update for broadband. So, we had a meeting webinar for the BEED program on December 12th. We will be able to know who's been rewarded or how much we've been rewarded in 2024. That's when the funding will be released. So, we've done the initial proposal with ARPC. I, I love them to death. I, I really thank them for all they've done for us. The initial proposal was turned in on 12/27, and then the final proposal is due as February of 2024. So, the pre-apple, is, is a different step. So, you have the pre-application process to identify the key areas, then you have the application, then you have the scoring. So, the scorer will determine how much money we'll get or if we'll get funded, and that's A, leverage, B, affordability, and C, fair labor, which I think we meet all of those qualifications. So, I think we have a good standing in order to get funding for the BEED program.
Good.
How often is our LTPT meeting now? Because we have a full board again, correct?
Yeah, it's about, um, three times a month, about every three months, I mean, about every three months.
Quarter.
Quarterly, yeah. We don't have a chairman. Yes.
We don't have a chairman. All you got to do is have a meeting in someone's, chairman.
Right now, I've been the one that's been as the chairman, but.
Okay, well, what I was gonna say is if your next meeting is in March, I'll get with you.
Okay.
Because we've been waiting to have a full board again.
Yes.
There, there's a group I talked with last time we were at the Association of Counties. They actually did a, an agreement with Monticello and Madison, that area, and between them and Duke Energy, they put all of their broadband on power poles.
Yes, that's what I'm hoping for.
They run it under the power line, so there's no bearing of cable, and now in that area, every resident has 100 up and 100 down for $99 a month.
And I think that would be perfect for 67, up 67 and 65.
Well, everybody's got a power pole.
Yeah, exactly.
So, they, they want to, to make that presentation to our LTPT, because that's what the state says it has to hear through that board first before it gets done.
Okay.
So, I'll get with you about setting that up. I think it'd be beneficial.
That'd be a perfect setup for us.
At least we could hear, hear where they're gonna say.
I got to have something.
Yeah.
My Wi-Fi don't have one.
Yeah, that's my main areas. It's up 65 and 67. I mean, because you have safety features.
And yeah, like it sprinkles it.
Yeah.
Let's, let's be straight honest. I'm worried about 336 Highway 98 where I'm trying to run that business, and I hit the button, and it's spinning because it can't do everything it's trying to do. I mean, we, we need better internet service across the state.
And more, more, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, more options than the ones we have. Like I said, there's people in my district that I've got, I can get media comm on my street, but in the street over, they can't, and I think that's stupid, and their excuse is, oh, well, there's not enough customers, there are not enough homes that way. No, that's bull crap. That's bull crap. Sorry.
And then Verizon, they've got area, or T-Mobile too, they've got areas where they'll cover a certain part of the county, but not everywhere else.
Okay, but that's all I wanted to make sure and mention all the time. Anything else, Ms. Courtney?
Nope, that's it, unless you guys have anything for me.
Anyone have anything for Ms. Bankston?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Um, as, as the Chairman stated on that last, uh, critical shoreline that we pulled out. I know in the past we discussed any, for a primary structure for any request for a dock with a lift to be built. I know that we had mentioned, I think, at a meeting before, that you were gonna address that with your P and Z BOA board. I just, I don't know what the outcome of that was, and I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but I think, again, like I said, and I'll make it, I'll say it again, moving forward, I don't, me personally, I am not going to vote in favor of any dock that is going on a piece of property that does not have a primary structure. So, I just want to make a note for everybody to know that right now. So, I'm gonna be voting no on that.
They did, they did, we had a discussion that we, we discussed different things. It was one about lifts versus slips, because with a regular boat slip, you don't need power, but that doesn't mean that they can't turn around later on and apply for a lift on a, a, a current dock. So, um, to me, if it's vacant, if it's gonna have power, say no.
Yes, because people are taking advantage of it, and, uh.
And they'll find a way around it.
That's just my thought, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I agree with you, Commissioner Ward. I do. I think, I, I, I mean, I, I always felt that, that, you know, unless there's a house there, you know, the primary, the secondary, you know, that's how we live.
And also, you'll probably see a couple more docks come forward. And also, you'll probably see a couple of more docks come forward only because D E P has been getting on a lot of these docks that are too small or too short. They've gotta go further out to the deeper waters to, so you'll probably see a couple more.
Right, changes over time.
Yep.
Well, and that's where we had that problem over there on Alligator Point. You had everybody's dock in line, and then you had this gentleman that wanted to be a hundred and five feet farther out there, and it, how it got approved through D E P, I don't know. But then I could understand if they had that big long point to go out of, you had that, that's different. But to actually go a hundred and five feet farther out there than the other docks, I'd just like for it to be consistent with the way I.
I think it's, that was just inconsistent with the deeper waters. And you may see more of those have to extend in order to get out to deeper waters on, in Alligator Point too.
Well, it had one about last month, month before, I'm like, just gotta get on something, get something. But anyway, it had some about, about last month that you had one, and, and it was approved. And I went by there the other day when the water was out. And he didn't get out nowhere.
Yeah.
Because I mean, he, he is not born yet.
Yeah.
I mean, the decisions already been made.
Yeah.
But anyway. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Ms. Courtney? Ms. Bankston, thank you.
No problem.
Uh, now we're opening the R F Ps for code enforcement services.
Don't go anywhere. Okay.
Break out the knife, the scissors.
I'll sit back down.
There's the envelope.
Nobody turn one in.
And we advertise where?
We advertise in Tallahassee, Panama City, and Apalachicola times.
What exactly was advertised? Do you know?
The advertisement.
Sorry, I hit, put you on the spot.
It's okay, I'm just gonna pull.
I'm sorry.
It's gonna lead to some discussion.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the question?
What was the exact thing we put out?
It's actually on our.
It's on your tab, but I'll bring it up.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
You want me to read it?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Frugal Board of County Commissioners seeking proposals from firms, individuals for code enforcement services. The selected firm individual must be qualified to provide code enforcement services. The awarded firm will be expected to enter into a one-year continuing services contract with the county with an option for renewal. For a complete R F P document package, please contact Ms. Courtney Bankston. In order to ensure a fair, competitive, open process, once a project is advertised for proposals, all communications between interested firms in the county must be directed to Ms. Courtney. Sealed proposal should be clearly marked on the outside of the sealed envelope. R F P, response, code enforcement services, and delivered to here. Responses will be opened today, which there are none. Um, that's, the rest is just repetitive in terms of legal, legal stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I had a gentleman contact me last week, and I referred him to Aaron and Courtney.
Yes, yes.
And, um, I mean, I would talk to him about it.
Yeah, I don't know how you guys want to handle it. We did have a, a person contact us that's interested in possibly being our code enforcement officer, but I don't know, I don't know if he was, yeah, I don't know how to handle that.
Well, that's not what we're dealing with right now. So, in the advertisement, it actually didn't mention any dollar amount. Let me, if, if I may, turn sure if it's out of line, please tell me. Did anybody even pick up a packet to fill out?
There's a couple of people who reached out for the packet, but no one who reached out for the packet actually turned it in.
Turned it in, okay, that's all I'm gonna do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Okay, we've gotta have code enforcement for our county. I, I, this obviously didn't work, okay? Because this is the way we thought we could do it, to kind of get the board out of it contractually, you know. We've gotta have it. We just approved a, a height restriction thing, you know? Who's going out measuring these things? We're, we've, we've held off, and somebody brought up the field ordinance while, we've held off on our R V ordinance, our field ordinance, because what good is an ordinance if you don't have anybody to enforce it? It's, it's counterproductive, it's counterintuitive, and we've got to have somebody. And I don't know if, if the, certain individuals are willing to do it. But again, there goes a, who, who's gonna be responsible? Is it gonna go into the, the board, which I personally don't want? Or the sheriff's office?
Yeah.
Because let's face it, being a code enforcement officer is not going to be an easy job, period. But we have to have somebody to do it.
That's just like that gentleman from, what I understand, Jessica. He, he, he would be willing to take the job, but he didn't know what the pay scale was. And I think, that's even why I sent him up.
Yeah, so we sent him the whole packet, which had all the information in there.
Well, I know we have budgeted, we, we have it budgeted.
Correct.
So, there's no, no, no backtrack and say, oh, well, we don't have it in the, no, we, it's there.
Yes.
I don't know, uh, what was it? We might not want to talk about that on the record, but all I know is we gotta get somebody.
It's in line with, with, with what other counties are charging for a code enforcement officer too.
I don't know if maybe, starting, I don't know if maybe, I know Waukulla County has a code enforcement board. Um, I don't know if maybe that's something we can look at. I know we're having trouble getting volunteers on boards.
Yeah.
But, I mean, maybe having another board might not be a, a good idea, but maybe, I, I don't know.
We're not, we, we, this board has not had anybody that's interested unless it be that one person.
Correct.
And so, I mean, that's it.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the reason why we did it this way was because we, well, we don't have any, it's, it's chicken and egg scenario, basically, you know, we'll come first. We don't have the ordinances. Do we go out and hire someone and then, you know, to, for a full-time position or part-time for that matter? I think the reason we went this approach was to see if we can just contract it out, because it's a lot easier to say, hey, look, we don't need your services anymore than it is to go say, hey, look, we're gonna have to let you go. I think that was our mindset, if I'm not wrong.
You're right. That's right.
Just to, you know, catch Commissioner Crum up with that, that's where we, how we got to this point, so to speak. But there again, going back to the chicken and the egg.
Which come first?
Exactly. We're gonna, we're gonna, if we're gonna hire somebody, we're gonna have to, we're, we're.
We need some orders with some teeth.
Get to work. I mean, we're gonna have to put some ordinances on paper and, you know, um, that's, that's, that's all I got.
So, my understanding.
And when I say that we, I'm just being collected. I'm not, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, pull the pants up and let's get with it.
Yeah, yeah, here you get off the pot.
So, what we're gonna do is, memory serves me, which always doesn't do very well anymore as I get older, is that we were going to basically concurrently try to get code enforcement firms, individual in place as we were looking at the ordinances, so hopefully they would all come together at the end. So, we, we tried this, because again, we, we wanted to use, we weren't comfortable with getting an employee at the time because we wanted to see how it would work out. So, obviously, we, we tried, this didn't work out. I, I don't see re-advertising as going to help in any way. So, you're kind of down to, kind of go back to, we're down to two choices. Either do it, start it off as a, a part-time employee, or, or, and, and, Mr. Chairman, we met a while ago with the sheriff, over a year now, maybe, you were there. Maybe we go back to the table with the sheriff and say, okay, maybe we want him to do the enforcement part of it, and Courtney continues to do the administrative part. So, basically, the county receives the complaints, she's in charge, she sends it to the sheriff's department, they do the enforcement part, and they report back to Courtney, this is what we did. And if it comes to a point where we need to magistrate, which we have, have that in place, then we go there. So, is that, or to me, it's starting off with a part-time employee, but I hear what Commissioner Amerson is saying, he's absolutely right. It's really hard to tell somebody, okay, we kind of made it, we thought it would work out, it didn't, sorry, you kind of gotta go, you know? And know that I believe, hey, Aaron talking in by Aaron, I'm assuming really not, but I believe we would have to do, I believe you have to pay retirement for, for a permanent part-time and one other benefit. So, know that that's included in, in the salary, which will probably run more than what we have budgeted. But it's, it's for you guys to think about basically, and maybe on the second, you guys say, okay, Michael, let's, let's try this way, or let's try, let's go back to the drawing board with the sheriff and see what we could work out.
Good, Mr. Chairman. We've had discussion, obviously, prior to this with, with the sheriff. Before I got here. And I'm, I'm quite sure he's gonna need to be monetarily compensated. What I'm getting at is, 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 uh, really for us to make that decision, we need to get with them, with the sheriff's department first, I feel, and, and, and see where we're gonna be financially there versus a part-time, possibly full-time. I mean, I, I would rather, instead of, you know, I'd rather just get all the information together at one time and say, hey, look, this is our choices and, and, and move on. Because if we, if we do it like, we're talking about doing it, forgive me about that, but it's just, we're, we're going on down the road. I'd just rather get all that information together, bring it to us, and let's, let's make the call.
So, I have two procedural things I want to ask. Number one is, so yes, so I guess the board would be approving you to meet with the sheriff? You had kind of an updated plan of action or how that might work?
They'll be approving us, you and me and Courtney again.
That's fine. I'm not always gonna say my name first, sir. To do that. The other thing is, if we're going to use, and I'm, I'm fine with it, if we're going to do something where it's moving monies from our budget to his, do we have to have another budget here?
I will verify that with Aaron.
I'm fine with it, I just want to make sure if we need to do it, that we do it.
Yes.
Uh, the other thing I will say is, including the discussion, and this is sunshine, including this discussion, I'm good with having a discussion with the sheriff about them actually being able to do the enforcement side and keep the administration in our office. So, they're not, I don't want to say it, sound funny.
There's a checking balance.
So, so there's a checking balance to it. Uh, they're going out, we, we receive complaints, and it works really well through our portal, and we're sending them out to check that complaint. You know what I mean?
That was, that was gonna be something I was gonna be curious about when we had that discussion with Sheriff's Department. Obviously, I don't want deputies running out going, I don't think there's enough hurricane. You know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm being, you know, I've got to be humorous every now and then. But I would rather that it, that the complaints come in and then go out to the sheriff, if, if that happens or goes that way. That way, we have some type of, I want to say, well, yeah, some, we can have some type of control.
Yeah, but I, I would want it to be, if they're driving around, they see something, they can call me and, and verify, hey, is this something that's?
Well, that, yeah, obviously, that, that, you know, they, they would be filing a complaint. The water could get there.
Yeah.
It still needs to be administered through the county side, is my personal preference. However, that shapes up to.
Well, do you want to look at both options that Michael said? You said the sheriff and then?
Yes, ma'am. So, what I'm hearing from Commissioner Amerson is that he wants to go. But I'm, but he, sir, we go ahead, meet with the sheriff, get his numbers, what he's asking. And then I turn around and ask Aaron, what will it cost to hire a part-time employee? Bring all that back to the board, and then you guys have a good discussion of what direction you want to go.
We don't have nothing that, I mean, that's, that's what I said, everybody like wants to say, how much you gonna pay me? Just like that airport job, how much you gonna pay me?
Be the job first.
Hey, you know what? It's just like I said, don't matter what you're doing, you're getting paid the same thing whatever you do.
You know?
Mr. Chairman, I will, I will add this, and, and I'm, I'm okay with what's been discussed, but I don't want any balls dropped. And what I mean by that is, I want seamless communication, I want open communication. It's gonna be very important. It's one thing if you get the complaint, as we are right now, with, through the border, and you're going out looking at the, the complaint. But I want to make sure that the line of communication stays open, however it happens, so that we can ensure that the complaints are being addressed and being addressed accordingly and taken care, and timely, and, and taken care of accordingly, and, and timely.
There you go.
So, that's my only request on that.
Commissioner, that could actually be another part of the process. She received the complaints, she goes out and verifies the complaints, and she turns over them for enforcement.
Yeah, because a, a lot of them have to kind of fast-track and send them to, you know, health department, make sure it's not nothing they have to handle. So, I kind of go through them anyway. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Alright, so is that something you need the motion to do, or you just board directions?
No, uh, board directions, fine. The motion will be once we get all the information to you, and then you guys make the decision that, what direction we're gonna go.
Now I know why Ms. Griffith didn't hang around for any kind of, I was wondering, I was like, well, you know, what's going on there? Now I know. Alright, thank you, Ms. Courtney.
No problem.
Mr. Rowan, we're up to you.
We are, aren't we? Alright, so item number one, at your last meeting, the board asked about the possibility of live streaming to Weems Board of Directors meetings. I discussed this possibility with Mr. Walker, the CEO. The responsibility of purchasing and maintaining the equipment and the software, along with the constant technical support to live stream and record the meetings, was their main concern that Weems staff would have to contend with. Let me pause there. Knowing to me, I would have said this to this board, when we first discussed it prior to that, the, one of the Weems board members had brought it to the floor with a motion, and there was no second, so it failed to record the meetings. So, that was the wish, I guess, I could say that's the wishes of the Weems Board of Directors. They recorded, they record the audio now, that's mostly for minutes, but they, you know, anyway. So, um, while discussing this matter with Commissioner Ward, she should, she suggested using Forgotten Coast TV, Smile for the camera, Royce, and to stream the Weems meeting as an option. F C T V currently streams the county commission and the city of Carroll meetings. I discussed this idea with Mr. Ralsted, as he sits over there in the corner, probably eating his snack, and he's willing to enter into a short-term agreement with the board to stream these meetings. This would remove any equipment, software, and technical responsibility from the Weems staff. I have not, time got away from me yesterday, I have not discussed this option with Mr. Walker, but that doesn't prevent me from bringing it to this board for some kind of direction or suggestion, or whichever way you want to go.
I like that, I like that idea though, Mike.
Okay, so basically, it's the board to discuss today, and then you authorize Attorney Schuler to create an agreement with F C T V to stream the Weems Board of Directors meetings.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on this, please? So, when Michael and I was, what, six, seven o'clock one night?
Yep, it sure was.
I was thinking, and that's the first thing that came to my mind, and then when I saw this on the agenda, when I was reviewing the agenda for today's meeting, I said, I don't want to pay for that. What do you mean, we're gonna, no, I, I don't, I, that's not what, what my intent was. Because, you know, I'm all about trying to be, we all are, being fiscally responsible with our, our taxpayer dollars. But then again, I got also thinking, you know, and the, the question was, do we, do we video it or do we just record it? And, and me, I'm a face person. I like to look at people's facial expressions because it can mean a lot, and I have to be careful. I've been told my facial expression sometimes speaks volumes with how I feel about the topic. But, um, but I feel like the face of, the, the, booking someone, at someone and their facial expressions can mean a lot. So, I did have that idea, I didn't like the idea of us paying for it, but in talking with Michael, and I don't want to throw a number out here, uh, but it's nothing. It's basically, and nothing against Royce, but he's not doing it for free, but he's not doing it for an astronomical amount of money. And the way I look at it is, they would have to be paying, we, they would be paying, we're paying for it anyway with Zoom. So, what's the difference? The only difference is, they're not having to maintain their own equipment, they're not gonna have any streaming issues. Royce is very well-versed in any issue that may come up when it comes to glitches, things that may not work right, he's gonna be there. To me, it's no different than paying Zoom versus paying a local guy to, to, to do these. And I don't know if you want to throw the number out or not, but it's, it's scruples, scruples.
I'll let those two work it out. But Royce, you do have my permission to record what you just said as an advertisement. That works really good.
Okay, hold on.
That's not what you said. You say that it's really high, but we're gonna go with it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I have no, Royce has not donated to my campaign and he hasn't.
Hell, we're off the rails.
Yeah, for real.
Anyway, now, well, that's going to come up. I, I'm going to, I've got some of Commissioner's comments and I could elaborate on them, but anyway.
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, it's a little high, Royce, but, I mean, me personally, um, you know, so don't, don't come back and try to.
I'm trying to scroll and argue.
Yeah, exactly.
There's two things, two things I like about it. It's more transparent, no, you're good. It, it's more transparent, obviously. And there is no issue with, uh, records retention. It's being posted on social media. I mean, it is live. You can go watch anytime you want to. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That was exactly what I was about to say, Mr. Chairman. And the thing about it is, is, and we all know this and you, you're soon to learn. That's probably one of the hottest topics, if it ain't the hottest topic in this county. And, um, by us going that route, that opens it up where not just us, but everybody can get that firsthand experience about what is actually going on. Uh, because, you know, in the past, and I'm not sitting, I'm not going to sit here and throw stones everywhere, but we get asked questions, us commissioners, we go back, try to get an answer. Who knows? It might be two months. You know what I mean? I think it'd be, it'll go, it, it would just go over a lot better because now it'll be right there. You know, if you want to go, go to YouTube, you can watch it. I think it's wonderful.
Well, it's.
It's still a little high.
Now we're a part of this discussion, but I do want to throw it out here because we're, we're under the sunshine and make sure this board is aware. Before I ever had this discussion with Mr. Rone about this possibility, when he started talking to us, well, that's really funny. Because I just got through talking to Mr. Solomon, our TDC director, about a way that we can actually zoom our meetings over at the, the building in East Point. Because we had talked about the need for Zoom. And you know, you put cameras up on spots where you get the back of everybody's head. But at the Regional Planning Council, they use a device called an owl that sits in the middle of an oval table. And when you start talking, the owl goes towards you.
It's a little spooky, people.
But that's what they go, that's what we're about to be doing. So we're, we're, we're already in the process of, that's on our next meeting to approve the purchase of that device so we can start streaming all the meetings at the TDC as well.
And Mr. Chairman, just let me add, it says here, short-term, short-term being the key word. If we do this for however, a couple of months, three months and decide it's not the right way or the right way to do it, then we can, we're, we're out of the agreement. We can figure out something else. So I just think that as Mr. Amison, Amison said, it's all about transparency. We record all of our other boards, uh, meetings and such. This just takes out the, the issue that Weems board currently state they were having with recording the meetings. So, uh, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion other than what we've already had? All in favor? Any opposed? That is a five oh vote.
Item number two, I'm going to put an interjector word in here. Another county parks and recreation employee submitted his resignation. Not another, not another in addition to this one, just this one. A county parks and rec- employee submitted his resignation effective Sunday, December 31st. Mr. Davis, your director is requesting authorization to advertise this vacant position as soon as possible.
Much to approve by Commissioner Amerson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
I have.
You, you remember those facial things? Yeah, okay.
Oh, we lose, did we lose two in four weeks or did we, did we lose three?
This makes three, correct?
This would be three total.
When I, one, one went to the airport, right?
We had approved two last week.
That one to the airport, but this one is in addition to the ones prior we talked about. This one just came in last week, the end of last week, I believe. Yeah.
Well, now y'all, we got to find out why they leaving.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, Mr. Chairman.
We got to find out why they leaving.
Commissioner, it's, okay, so let's, Commissioner Amerson, can I talk about, let's talk about Scott, the one that left. You, you, you know why is one of the biggest things, why he transferred from Parks and Rec?
Weekend?
To weekends. That was the thing. It's, it's, they don't have enough employees to rotate the weekends where they can have a weekend off to spend with their family. So it's, it's hard. I, I keep preaching to you guys, that's a tough, tough job that they're doing right now. It isn't too bad because there's no sports in season, you know, we don't have as many visitors, but you know, the, the small group is responsible for maintaining all your parks. Baseball season is coming up right around the corner. They're responsible for the leave no trace, enforcing the leave no trace ordinance on, on, on all your beaches. They're responsible for all the bathrooms at every single park and boat rent that you have. That is a lot. I mean, those guys are hustling. I'm telling you, they, they, they are. And, um, and I know we've talked about, yes, I've, I've been one who wants to preach about compensation. I, I think it's more than that now. I think it's, we need to find a way to encourage, to get more people, make it attractive so more people come out. Uh, I did talk about with Fonda, you know, I talked to the board about maybe if it gets too bad for it, we could look for a vendor to, who will maintain the fields while the guys focus on other things. You guys had a mixed reaction to that. Mr. Davis heard what you said. So he's like, Michael, let's just hold off on that. Let me see how baseball season starts and then from there I'll let you know. That was, he, he's in charge. It's his, we're not going to overstep. That's his thing. So I'm just on standby with Fonda for that. But that's, that's where we are, Commissioner.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my thing too is you're putting more work on the ones, he's already short-staffed, you're putting more work on the ones that are left. And it's not fair to them either. We've got to, we've got to come up with a solution. And I think that, um, and I don't want to speak, again, Mr. Davis isn't here to, to, you know, speak on his own behalf, but yeah, we definitely got to look at something to, to fix this issue. And I think a lot of the reason too, and I hate to say this, is how many times they have to go not just clean a bathroom, but a bathroom with, that's vandalized with feces and. Toilet paper everywhere. And so I can understand why they wouldn't want to do that either. There, that's, that's, that's really a health thing too. It's not that they're doing it and, and getting paid, but they're getting paid to do that. But it's the potential of, no, it's just disgusting. That's all I'm going to say about that.
And we've got those garbage cans and, and that we have over there on the public access and stuff, those things are pretty, those bags are pretty heavy coming out of there. And, and I mean, tell you, but we're going to have to do something to encourage them. There's going to have to be some, some kind of amount of employees that you can rotate in and rotate out or something. Or like Island View, there's some funds in there for, that we can hire a vendor to clean Island View. But that's only one.
That's one park, yes, ma'am.
You see what I'm saying? So I, I knew it was something. And, and you know, that's constantly, the weekend is constantly. They never have a weekend off to be with their family.
There's not enough of that.
They never have a weekend off to be, you know, whatever. And, and I know how that feels because I worked a long, many years.
Been there, done that.
Every weekend. And it, things like the world's passing you by. And before you know it, me and Oscar got old, you know?
Mr. Chairman, that's true. This is something I guess we need to really discuss whenever we have Mr. Davis there, but what, what, what is it that consumes those weekends? You know, Parks and Recs is, is why, I mean, that's, that covers a pretty broad area. You know, obviously they're not, they're not running in there to SGI cleaning a toilet on Saturday and Sunday, but I tell you what they are doing. They striping them fields. Um, and that's why I, I was, you know, I know, um, uh, me and you discussed it when it was brought up about, uh, contracting that out. If you could just contract out the field work, you're going to alleviate, uh, the, a huge burden. And that would give our guys more time to focus on the, uh, not the sports arenas that, that we have, but.
Yeah.
The parks and, and, and whatnot. That, see, that, that's, it's not that I'm trying to, or, or, we was having this discussion in the past, trying to alleviate hiring somebody. Fact is, is nobody really wants a job. Uh, and then whenever you do have these jobs like this, that, that really, I mean, these guys are not, they're, they're like, like you said earlier, they're giving up their weekends and that's all, that's all revolves around the sports part of it, you know? I mean, I've been out there, I've coached for years out there and, and, and Chairman Jones has been involved with that side of it. I, I see what them guys have done from that aspect as well. And they get it burned out. And you're not going to keep, uh, you know, just, you're not, we're not, we're not going to fix it, i- is what I'm getting at. Uh, unless we start kind of looking at some different avenues, just, I'm not saying take over all of Parks and Recs with, with a private.
No.
But we could, we could get some, you know.
That was my intent.
That's what I was talking about, the island view and different things like that.
Yeah, but see, the thing about it is though, if you're looking at it from that aspect, that's not going to help the problem. Because like I just said earlier, they were, they're not getting called in on the weekend for the island. They're still going to have that weekend issue because it's the fields that were, that were.
But the bathrooms too, Commissioner Amerson, yes, on the weekends. If you have a busy beach day, oh, you better believe, it's like almost, I mean, Commissioner Jones, it's almost 24/7 out there on the beach. And they have to go back to the bathrooms, you know, visiting two, three times a day.
But some of, and I know Mr. Davis is not here, but some of what we discussed and some of the outlash we had last summer was because we had weekends we didn't pick up the trash. And by Monday morning, it was stacked up and running over. Or, or Labor Day weekend.
Or they didn't have enough employees, yep.
Where it was a, a day off, you know, and there, there wasn't anybody working on that weekend. And it was an absorbent amount of trash.
Christmas and New Year's last year.
You know what I mean? So.
There we go again.
But anyway.
Well, and y'all, and I'm just going to say this, it's been referenced with someone's going to say this. The, the people that left that, when I said what I did about the outside vendors compared to the local folks getting a job, those folks left not just because Saturday, they left because they didn't feel like they were getting enough money. So that's what I said. Is it something that we need to do about their pay or something like this? And that's what I would say.
One word incentive, Mr. Chairman, incentive. You got to give somebody an incentive to work the weekend. It's like the on-call thing we talked about in the past with, you know, incentive for them to work the weekends. I know that I'm, I don't, I have to work weekends. I'm working through Christmas and New Years. Is there an incentive for me to do that? Yeah, there is. And I think that's what appeals to the people. And, and, and I agree with Commissioner Amson, you, we live in a climate where, let's face it, nobody wants to work because they're getting a check from the government. I mean, I hate to say that, but it's true. You don't have the work ethic.
I was going to go that far.
Well, I said it. I said it. So.
No, I, I, but, and that's why I said we need, maybe we need to have, uh, uh, Mr. Davis here because I'm just guessing that it's the, for some reason, I just, I, I figured, I feel the burden as, from the field aspect. I don't see this other, and that's why we would like to have him here to say, hey, you know, um.
What is it?
Wait, what, what's, what's, what are these guys doing on Saturdays and Sundays most of the time? Is it, is it, I mean, if you, if it is that, then yeah. But, but we don't know until we. Oh, I know that. But that's what I'm saying. We need to have that discussion with him. And that way we'll know which way to direct him, so to speak, and saying, hey, look, you know, talk to a company that wants to do like the bathrooms or something like that, or either somebody that's going to alleviate some of the burden on the fields. But I don't feel like we've had that kind of interaction with, with Mr. Davis, or I have. I don't know about any of the other, uh, commissioners, but that's.
I'm ready for the second to discuss this with you guys. But can you get, get a motion?
Uh, yes.
We did have a motion second.
Did have a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have a motion. We were under our.
Discussion portion.
The labor discussion.
The labor.
Anything else before we vote? On approving this advertisement for a vacant position for Parks and Rec? All in favor? All opposed? That's a five oh vote.
Our commissioners, as time is moving on, I am going to just, you can read who was there at the Triumph meeting. I'm going to go ahead and just, and by the way, that, you've heard me fuss about this before, that was the most productive, the most positive, the most energetic. What other, what words can I find to describe that meeting with Triumph?
Amazing.
Amazing, um, yeah.
We're going to get that.
But, okay, I'm going to stop because Commissioner Amerson and Mr. Kirshenbaum is here, they're going to really get down into the meat of that meeting for you guys.
Well, what had happened was I walked in there, it was like a ray of sunshine when I walked in that building and, and.
We should have seen you last time. We should have seen you the last time, boy.
I get it now.
She was looking at me.
Especially with you, Commissioner Sam.
It was like a ray of sunshine when I walked in. No, to be honest with you, I've, uh, it, it, I don't have a meeting to, to base this off of, or any prior experience. Um, but I, I was telling Chairman Jones, it was very informative. It was, it was good for me on, on that aspect. But I'm going to tell you, um, Mr. Kirshenbaum's the one that, that did the work. He went in there and, uh, pretty much represented the county, represented the airport. Um, I just basically sat there, me and Mike, where, and, and we just let him sprout his wings and fly. And I'm going to tell you, he saw what, he did a great job. Um, and I'm going to turn that over to him and let, because he's had some further conversations with some folks, uh, post that meeting. Um, it, it's, I'm going, uh, I'll let him do it. I don't want to take too much steam away from him, but I'm going to tell you all, the, uh, the potential with that funding out there is, is astronomical. But, but, uh, Mr. Kirshenbaum, if you don't mind enlightening us, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Amerson. And thank you, members of the commission. It was an incredible honor to represent the county at that meeting and be able to speak about what I, what I have acquired the past 20, 30 years of my life. Um, in advance of that meeting, the, the crazy thing was my wife was in the hospital all week. I think I could plan important meetings by how my life's going to go. And every night I came home after Woods and I worked on the group that was going to be in that room. And I said, if I'm going to go in that room and talk to them about our airport, about economic development, about jobs, I want to know who's in that room. And I went to LinkedIn, I looked up everybody and when I walked in that room, I knew who the players were and it was really enjoyable. As far as the airport board, I'd like to say, um, we're here to open doors, to acquire information and to put projects before you for you to make the ultimate decision on. And, uh, this, this table opened up a lot of doors. We had, um, Leslie Weiss, who was one of the Triumph board members there. So the content of that meeting is going back to the Triumph board. Cory was there around the meeting and she was incredible, the group she put together. Um, we had Duke Energy there who worked on an industrial park project for us that I reviewed and we're going to have further discussions about. Um, Florida's Great Northwest, Shane Chadwick was there, which was incredible. He told us about job opportunities, about businesses that would relocate at the airport. And he said, when we're ready, start having discussions. I'm going to be speaking to him this week. Um, Space Florida was there, which oversees the space industry and the aerospace industry in the state of Florida. And I had conversations with him. He's going to be in Tallahassee the week, uh, third week of January. And he'd like to meet with me and a representative from the county, and he has some grand ideas for us. Um, Florida Commerce was there from the state, and they said, there's incredible opportunities for rural communities and we fall into that. Opportunity Florida, of which we're a member, uh, Richard and Roy, incredible, um, going to bat for us at that meeting. In fact, they said, I've been having several conversations with them since the meeting, and they opened up the door for us with USDA. So we're going to be having a conversation this week, hopefully on Thursday, to get some more information for you and to bring it back to the county. And, uh, I asked the county chair if he'd be a part of that conversation. And hopefully we can bring back money for that industrial teahanger complex. The, uh, also, uh, the, the chair wrote an incredible thank you letter to Tyndall Air Force Base. I shared that at the meeting. And I made contact with the commander, vice commander at Tyndall, and they'd like to do a follow-up meeting with us, um, the first week of February. So I set up something with that. But we're going to have, uh, the best thing was FDOT was there, Quentin Williams, who was the head grant guy for the FDOT. And he walked out of that meeting and said, whoa, Franklin County means business and wants to bring jobs to this airport and economic development. And I said, yes, you're right. And he says, well, I'm here to help you. And all those agencies involved, uh, it was an amazing room full of heavy hitters from the state of Florida, and they all want to help us. And the biggest thing they told us, you have an incredible blank slate. It's incredibly in demand and we want to help you. And in the following weeks, I'll start bringing stuff to the commission, um, and ideas. And I'll make the county coordinator a part of it and, uh, and it's up to you to make the decisions, what you want to do. But I really appreciate the opportunity and thank you so much for giving me a chance. Thank you. Any questions or anything, or you're good?
Just a comment. I'm glad it was such a productive meeting. Uh, we need to develop that, that airport as we all know.
Absolutely.
For the jobs and, uh, so I'm glad it, it came out. And I'm glad that Opportunity Florida and those folks like that understand that finally we need something.
Yep.
To be a member. We need something down here that they can help us with, like all those times we helped them.
Oh, and they, they want to. And I told them to make me a part of your future meetings and I'll show up at them all.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're also, aren't we also members of, we're the Great Northwest?
Yes, we are.
I thought we were.
Yes, sir. Same thing. I want to make a part of going to those meetings too. So thank you very much for allowing me to do that for the county and, uh, I think good things are going to happen from that meeting. Thank you, everybody.
The difference, uh, commissioners that, uh, Mr. Kirshenbaum, Commissioner Amson cannot draw from because they weren't to previous meetings that, you know, most, the three, is that, two things. So Triumph is evolving. So they're not, they don't have the attitude they used to have in the past with the other board members. They have been directed to get this money to the rural counties ASAP.
They'll probably run a check.
They mean it this time. Let me put it to you that way. Yeah, so, yeah.
All they can do is run a check. It's all good.
The second thing that we found out now, what they're saying to us, and, and Opportunity Florida said it in front of them, is basically work with all the other agencies. Let the other agencies deal with Triumph on the projects that we have. Because Richard, and he said it in front of them, repeating myself, he said basically, I know what to put in the application that you're looking for to get them to say yes. And they looked around and they said, yeah, he does. So.
Yes.
It's more of a, of a group effort now rather than us fighting with Triumph. You see? You see, so, I, I, Commissioner, Chairman, I, I see a face. I know you're like, that's not what's written in. I know. But this is a new age of Triumph, let's put it that way, and what they wanna do. So we're gonna give it to Triumph.
And one more thing. Ri- Richard brought up something. Um, I mentioned something about rural communities, and that we should be given a different edge on this with the numbers they're doing. And Richard jumped in and said, you know what? We're basing this, why don't you base this on population density? And we have a county here of fifteen thousand people versus Waculla and other counties that have ten times the population. And that was said in front of a Triumph Board member, and I think, uh, they're gonna be a lot more liberal with us as we move forward, I think. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let me ask a question. I wasn't in the room, but I know we've talked about it several times. It, it's always seemed to me like we've had numerous meetings, Mr. Moreau, with Triumph, with Triumph staff, trying to get things going. Uh, and, and, and we've even had meetings where we've been there for an hour or two, said, well, what about this? No, we can't do that because that, that, that. Okay, well, what about this? No, we can't do it because of that. We're, we're still gonna beat around this, and I'm glad this meeting, well, I'm not downplaying. We're still gonna beat around this bush until we hire somebody to do economic development. We did something last year we've never done before. We hired a lobbyist. I think everybody, the public and the board knows that whenever, great. And until we get somebody representing us, like, I, I know we're a part of Opportunity Florida, but Opportunity Florida's not being paid to represent us, if I can put it that way. Uh, I still think we're going to need to do something with economic development, even if that's hiring somebody.
Let Commissioner Amerson touch-
Mr. Chairman, uh, you, you hit the nail on the head because, um, uh, Richard, that's specifically verbatim, or whatever word you wanna use, exactly what Richard said in that meeting. That we're missing out on a lot of funding because we don't have that person that's out there chasing this down. And, and, and we're the only, let me, let me put that in there. We're the only ones that haven't took that stealth yet.
Yes.
And now that comes straight from Opportunity Florida, and, and me, Aaron, Michael, uh, Ted was there, we all heard it come right out his mouth. Um, they, they, the, the return on investment there is, is astronomical, and we're, we're still in this area that we are in. And he recommended, along with a lot of them, is that we reach out and try to, uh, uh, you know, fix that problem. Um, I didn't know it at the time, but I think, uh, uh, what's the, what's the company's name I think y'all have had in the past? This, I think it was prior before I got here, um, the, the company that did Waculla? Um, they were all familiar with, like, name's Julie?
Julie Dennis.
Yeah, that, everybody there was familiar with that lady.
Julie Beth.
The, they, that's what they were recommending, that we, you know, either, uh, hire someone or either, you know, contract out with someone to go out and, 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 and do this. Because we're, we're the only county. We're still sitting, uh, well, we're behind because everybody else is moving, yeah.
We don't have a real seat.
Exactly.
And you know, to spend seventy-five thousand to yield millions, or whatever the number is, I think it's money well spent for somebody to do that. And it would make our job easier as a board, too.
Well, I, I will say this, uh, not knowing none of that, just cause I've brought up economic development several times in my time here. So yesterday I was, uh, speaking with a commissioner from Waculla about this same thing, cause I knew what I was planning on saying today, cause I knew we were talking about Triumph. Uh, and she not only provided me with the recent report they got, cause they hired a company to do it, uh, in twenty twenty, actually during the middle of COVID. So it was kinda slow, but it gave them time, this is what the commissioner told me, it gave them time to build up, this is what Waculla really needs, this is what we can go after. These are the real needs, these are the real, real world opportunities for this county. So to kinda know what they're going after. And I have a copy of, and I, I emailed to Mr. Moreau, so he can give it to the rest of the commission yesterday, the, uh, current return on investment report that they gave to Waculla County to show what they've done and how much money Waculla's invested and what they've gotten out of it.
And you know what, Commissioner Jones? I would love for our group to open the door, do all the dialogue, and hand it off to that person to make it happen. That would be incredible aviation-wise and industry-wise, I'd say.
Well, I'm talking about for economic development period, not just aviation.
We, we need that, it's, it's for the entire county, not just for the airport, so that's-
But that's good, but I mean, but I'm talking for the whole entire, because one of the issues we have, listen, tourism has treated us well so far, but it has its issues. I'm not gonna lie. Uh, specifically, that's the way the statute is written, uh, with the spending of the monies. But we need to diversify our economy the worst way. There's any need we have, diversification of the economy is a very big one. So, you know, the airport's good, and we wanna still push for that, but we need to look at everything.
Because, I agree with you, Commissioner. Because at one time, our main economy was the bay.
Yes.
Then, the next time, it was correction. Now, well, they've fallen off that correction, like they're dealing with the prisons now. We haven't got the bay. So number one now is, what?
Truth.
Truth. It used to be silver culture. It used to be logging. That's leaving.
And Mr. Chairman, we're, I hate to say this, one hurricane away from that being completely gone. So we do, like you said, diversify is the key word here.
Yep. So what do we need to do?
So with that said, um, without a, really a motion, just some simple board direction. Do you want, uh, me to reach out to Ms. Dennis and have a conversation and see at what time she could come and talk to the board? See what she does, what her option, what the board's options are working with her, and then we go from there? If she already does it for Waculla County, I'm not sure what other counties.
Have y'all had any interaction with her?
And, and not with Julie, I've never had, but I know Ms. Beth was the one that presented to us about the airport.
Years ago?
When we were going through the thing, when I first got on the board, when we were going through the Gulf to Gaps Freight Logistics Zone and the Regional Planning Council.
Enterprise Zone.
Which we're still not giving up on. This runway expansion could be a big part of that.
Again.
That's great.
Again.
All right, well.
So, okay.
I could. Okay, I'll do that. I'll reach out to, to the group and then bring back some information, then.
I know, I know Beth, I know you.
And I'll keep you all posted on the project, on the, on the forward motion of this. I couldn't get the right word out of my mouth.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Stephen. Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
Okay, let me do this. Before I go to the next item. I won't be long, I promise you. Yeah, look at me.
You ain't got much.
I know. So, the new fire truck. They brought it by yesterday on their way to Larnar Village. Uh, uh, Commissioner Sanders, I apologize.
I'm gonna go hang out with it and have a picture.
I know, I meant to come in there. I meant to come right in and call you, but-
Well, at least Commissioner Prue's got it.
Well, here's the thing. We were fortunate that when they came, he was here, him and I were. And then, and I looked at him and I was like, wait a minute, Commissioner, you, you're a volunteer fireman, and that's all he needed. So next thing I know, he's having these discussions with the guy, he's going through the truck, you're opening doors, lifting bays, blah, blah, blah. So Courtney and I just stood aside and said, well, we'll, we'll tell everybody. They're professionals, you know?
Ask the questions. Well, since you're a fireman, uh, Anthony, what is your ideas of that new fire truck?
They're gonna love that truck.
It, it's gonna be good.
Yes, it's gonna be a good addition.
Good, I'm glad. Thank you for welcoming it to the county.
And so, to, in addition to that, I also met with Chief Ross, and, you know, it, it, Commissioner, I think I said it the last time, but I'll say it again. There was, there's a small group of firefighters. They're not really a board per se, but they're a group. And so they elected him as the chief, and he, we, we sat down with him yesterday. I'm not, I'm sorry, last week, we did. And we talked about some of his plans to move forward, which he liked to discuss with the board. The two of the older trucks that they can't do anything with, they're gonna sell. Um, Ten Eight is gonna look for some leads to help them sell those trucks. There is one truck that can be certified as a backup. That's gonna be sent to Ten Eight, the same company, a solar disrupt. They're gonna repair it and certify it, so it's an active truck. Uh, and then from there, Chief Ross is gonna call the, the State Fire Marshal Office to see exactly what it is it takes for them to become active as a volunteer fire department. He's gonna let me know, and if he needs anything from us, we'll do it. And that's where we are. So when I hear some more from him, I'll schedule him on, on an agenda to, to make a presentation to the board, give you an update. That's the way they are.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Uh, did Mr. Ross say if they had gotten all the EVO training and all that?
Yes, I think, and I can send it to you, but there's nine of them that got that EVO training. Um, there's some other training that they're working on. They only have one fully certified, uh, fireman, whatever that classification is.
Class.
Class one, but they're working on others that are close to it, that, you know, have them, and, and Commissioners, he is looking at the ISO rating. So he's trying to do things with the fire department to reduce the ISO rating in that district.
Right.
He's aware of that, and he's working with that.
Well, the main thing is get that department running. That'd help the ISO real, real good there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, looking from last year to now, I know when I first came on this board, to see this progress like it has is phenomenal. I think we've made leaps and bounds and great strides. We're to almost having this, uh, fire department fully up and functioning again is awesome.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, um, that, uh, there's a, uh, Steve, Steven's gone already. There's an airport meeting in here at five o'clock this afternoon. Uh, just to let you guys know, they, they usually meet on the fourth, the last Thursday of the month, but that's Chris, that's the day after Christmas, so we moved it up to this afternoon. And your next meeting is on Tuesday, January second. So, and just to let you guys know, speaking of the next meeting, uh, so next week, uh, I will be, I'm not quite sure yet if it's a staycation or a vacation or something like that. So if I'm slow with responding to emails, texts, calls, whenever, you'll know why. Yeah, I think I'm-
What, what are the dates that I'll make sure to not contact you?
Uh, for sure.
I'll make sure to call you every day.
For sure, um, uh, you know, Christmas is Monday, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday. I'm prob, I'm probably gonna go down and take a drive to see my mother, like, right after Christmas. So I'll be in Tampa for the week, basically.
I don't like to bother people on their off days, so.
Yeah, so.
All right.
Yeah. So, again, but then, you know, uh, yeah, so, so, yeah.
If I know they're off.
And that's it for my report. And of course, I wish you all the best for the season, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, you know? Um, uh, the, the agenda for the second, because I'll be off that week and won't be here, the, the, the agenda for the second might actually be online this Thursday or Friday. Okay? Uh, I'll include the, uh, public hearing that we just moved, that'll be on it, and if anything else. So know that January second might be a quick meeting, because I think some of your other directors are on vacation, so they might not have reports for you either. But, uh, I will make sure that Mr. Davis know you guys would like to talk about the Parks and Rec employees on the second, so he's prepared for that. And, um, hey, we do what we do.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Moreau before we proceed? Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Mr. Sanders?
Final action item, uh, on my report is, at the last meeting, you approved a, a second addendum to the FBO, um, lease agreement with Centric Aviation to allow for the rental of cars. When I prepared the, uh, initial draft for that addendum, sent it up to Centric. It was Centric renting the cars, because that is the way I understood the presentation. They had no issues with the draft, but informed me that they wanted to form this third-party company that will be owned by, as I understand it, and I'm told Tara and Andrew will also own this third-party company. The name of the third-party company is Centric Car Rental, Doing Businesses, Quest Car Rental. Um, the reason I'm bringing this back to you is, since I didn't know they were renting cars out through a third-party, I suspect you didn't know about it. Uh, it's not that the contract doesn't allow for it, but the, you, you'll say the contract, the lease agreement, however, it requires specific board approval for a third-party to be doing any operations at the airport through Centric. So I'm bringing it back to you, not to readdress the issue of car rentals, but just, uh, for your consideration, uh, and approval that the rental of the cars would be through Centric Car Rental and not Centric Aviation. And that's, unless you have questions for me, that's my presentation.
Do you need board action, you said?
We do need board action, because the, the FBO lease specifically requires board approval before Centric can provide airport services through a third-party. And as far as I'm concerned, creating a new LLC, even though it's still Tara and Andrew, that is still a new entity. That is a third-party entity because it's not a party to the FBO lease itself. The FBO lease between the county and Centric, and now this, Centric is, is, is creating this new car rental limited liability company. So it's, it's just a matter of, it's a technicality, but I still had to bring it back to the board for approval. So my, my request is a motion to approve the second addendum with Centric renting cars through Centric Car Rental, Doing Businesses, Quest Car Rental.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
This, this doesn't affect anything we discussed at the last, uh, meeting.
The, the addendum, it's-
Is there any of that stuff? Everything's pretty much?
Um, the, the, the meat and potatoes is in paragraph two, and so I'll just read some of that into the record. It says, "Subject to and as authorized by Paragraph 1K of the FBO Agreement." That's the provision of the FBO lease agreement that allows for Centric to provide services through a third-party company. But they can only do so after getting prior board approval from you. Franklin County and Centric hereby mutually amend the FBO agreement for the second time to allow Centric to provide passenger car rentals for rent to the general public on commercially reasonable terms via a third-party. To it, Centric Car Rental LLC, a New Jersey limited liability company doing businesses, Quest Car Rental. Provided, however, that for this privilege, Centric Car Rental shall pay to Franklin County a fee of ten percent of the total rental fee per vehicle each time it is rented, excluding taxes, late fees, and expenses for gas or repairs and maintenance. Uh, during the term of this second addendum, uh, rental fees shall be submitted to Franklin County by the tenth day of the month. Y'all didn't specify a date for payment, and I thought it was wise to have a, a fixed date that they had to, you know, turn over the ten percent fee to the county. And with that payment, they will provide sufficient information that Franklin County can determine the total number of vehicles rented to the public each month and the total rental fees paid by the public each month. Again, y'all didn't necessarily say that, but I think it was embedded within your decision that if you're gonna collect ten percent, you need to be able to figure out how to collect your ten, or calculate your ten percent. Um, rental fees shall include anything of value paid to the third-party, that's the, the Centric, uh, car rental by the public, excluding the aforementioned taxes, late fees, expenses, uh, for gas or repairs and maintenance. Uh, Centric will ensure that the third-party company does not violate any terms of the FBO agreement. The term of this second addendum expires when the FBO lease agreement expires. Uh, except as provided herein, the terms of the FBO agreement remain in full force and effect. And the effective date, regardless of when executed, will be November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, which is the date that y'all approved the car rentals. Hopefully, that was a very long answer on the end of a very long day, but since you asked, Commissioner, I'm gonna make sure we get it clear on the record.
So did we have a motion on the second?
We had a motion from Commissioner Amerson, and I believe a second taken by the board, and Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Sanders.
It's all good. I just wanted to clarify and make sure. It's been a long meeting, sorry. Wanted to make sure procedures were handled and everything right. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? That's your names. Anyone have anything for Mr. Sanders?
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just off the top of my head now. I get feelings in my bones. And it, I mean, I'm being serious. I'm getting feelings in my bones. I got a letter this week from my insurance people that said, notify you, Dr. Newton is gone from the clinic, and he will no longer be, in other words, if I wanted to go to see him, I could no longer go see because he's not with the group that he was in before. He's in with another group, but they don't allow us to go to that group. So that makes me think deja vu may be coming back around. Let me ask you, Michael, in your professional opinion,
She said Michael in professional.
What would be, what would be the last dropout day? Let me see if I got it right. To, to notify a client that we don't wanna continue our contract with them. What would be the?
I need to fully agree with you, Commissioner.
Can you find out?
It is got a termination for convenience provision. I just don't remember how many days.
I know we got a ninety-day clause, right?
I think it was ninety the last time we brought it up.
I don't know for-
Every ninety days is what I thought.
I, I will, there is a termination for convenience provision. I don't remember if it was ninety, or it's a hundred and eighty, or thirty. I just, I don't remember.
But can you do that and an, and answer my question when you get back at the next meeting?
I'll get an answer and call everybody this afternoon.
I wouldn't ask if I didn't think there was a reason to ask, so.
Well, what, what does catch and sin commissioners there, it's not really the people can't even see, it's that they don't have capital health insurance and.
When did you get it too?
Oh, yeah, when you cross the line, they don't.
It just makes me, it makes me wonder, because I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned about the pulling out of TMH out of Franklin County.
Mr. Chairman.
I am concerned about that, y'all. And it really, it bothers me, you know?
I'm, I'm, I've, I've found something out, and I don't know if y'all know this, but do you know who owns CHP? TMH. So they're not going to allow you, TMH on CHP, is what I was told. Uh, so they're not gonna let you go to Sacred or go to any other hospital out there, out of TMH's network.
Right.
So.
I did not.
Not either.
All right, let me, let me keep my mouth shut.
But I'm, what I'm saying is, there, there's, there's your, um, your obstacle, so to speak, as far as, you know, people from, county employees that are, that are on CHP, they're limited on where they can go, and if you'll notice, it's all up there around TMH. And it was kind of like a light bulb come on whenever I was, cause, trust me, I'm, I've always been under the impression that if, like, in years past, if we, there would have been other decisions made regarding the hospital, that eventually, like, at that time Sacred took it over, they would eventually work out a contract with CHP, which now I've kind of realized I don't think that would happen, because why would TMH work out a contract with their?
Competitor.
Yeah, competitor. So that's just a little food for thought of that.
Well, and, and, and that's what mine is.
Yeah, I would like to verify, but, but it comes from a pretty viable source, so.
And mine's food for thought, because I've been, I, I, I've been through a lot of this with this hospital, and I just see it. And I'm really concerned, but now, y'all, y'all tell me, because I wasn't here when you all did the Alliant contract. I was not here.
I wasn't either.
You wasn't either?
Only, well, we.
Oh, you wasn't either, was you? Okay. Just you, just you. Okay.
That's odd.
With Alliant, with, because I gotta get, and this is open.
You were still just one of five.
So, so, uh, um, and I wasn't here. But anyway, would Alliant being backed by TMH?
Well, at that time, there was somebody different that was heading Alliant that was speaking to us.
Was that, that Mr. Jim Coleman?
And that was who TMH said that they were willing to work with. Yes.
See, and the.
It's a whole different discussion, because
Yeah.
we were talking with Jim Coleman, not with the current, and it's nothing against the current one. I'm just trying to answer your question. Not against the current guy that's heading it up, but we were talking with Jim Coleman, and everybody had a good feeling about Jim Coleman. I thought you were here when that.
I think what it was, it was more of a, a, a gentleman's agreement, so to speak. It was more of a handshake, gentleman's agreement.
Yeah, I met Mr. Coleman. I met Mr. Coleman, but when I left, Mr. Coleman wasn't part of it, wasn't part of the thing. But it's just, I'm, I'm looking, and I'm looking, and I'm rattling through my head, and I, I do institutional knowledge, and where we been, and where we going, and I'm kind of, are we backtracking, or, you know, that's our question, not, you know? But it's food for thought, like, like, all this says, it's food for thought.
But, so, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just, but to answer your question, I read the minutes of, of, of going back to that, and, uh, to, where TMH comes in, I think Mr. Coleman and the, uh, uh, one of the directors at TMH, one of the higher-ups, he might have been their CEO. Had a relationship.
It was, it was Marco Bryant, you correct.
And, uh, and that's why it was more of a gentleman's agreement between the county and Mr. and Alliant, uh, well, with Mr. Coleman, but he was representing Alliant at the time. But that, that's, there was nothing contractual, it was just a, a verbal agreement.
Yeah, well, I want to look after my, after the people of Franklin County.
I understand.
Make sure their healthcare needs, and it's concerning to me. But anyway.
Anytime you lose a primary care doctor, it's very concerning.
It's very concerning.
Period. Doesn't matter what the.
He was good.
Yeah, doesn't matter what the circumstances are. Concerning. Anyone else? Anything for Mr. Shula?
No.
Merry Christmas.
I do have a.
Now, do you have something?
Look, no, not for him.
I'm just waiting for Commissioner comments.
Oh, okay. Well, then, Commissioner comments, and go ahead, sir.
Yeah, we're good.
You need, you want, uh, uh, or you?
I'll go first, Mr. Chairman, uh, and I'll try to be brief, but I just want to make a point. There was a lot of, uh, social media posts about the Hawk Crosswalk and Carabao. And it started with people just asking who was responsible, blah, blah, blah. So I took responsibility and ownership of it, because it was my idea. Uh, I made a post about it. Uh, there were other posts and other, uh, forums, one of which were, there was a gentleman kind of bashing me, so to speak, and I'm, I could take constructive criticism all day, but he was complaining about the cost, and I just want everybody to know. Now, I, I've, I commented back to this individual, but I'm not going to get in the Facebook world with somebody. You can call me personally, we could talk about it. But to, you know, he was saying it was called, it costs four hundred thousand dollars. Forty thousand, four, forty thousand dollars versus four hundred thousand dollars, it doesn't matter to me. It's a, it's a cost of a life. You can't put money on a life. It was a dangerous intersection. I felt like something needed to go there. He, he accused me of taking a kickback from the RV, uh, place across the street, which is why I brought up with Royce Walgo. I, you could call me out, call me whatever name you want, do not question my integrity, and do not question my ethics, because I don't do this job for the money, trust me. I don't do it. I make good enough money doing what I do as a respiratory therapist. I don't need this job for the money. So don't ever, anybody, question my integrity or what my intention are, is in terms of, uh, I'm doing something to get a kickback, or to get money, or whatever. Furthermore, I didn't choose where that crosswalk went. FDOT chose where it went, FDOT chose what kind of crosswalk it was. I had no say in any of that, and the way I look at it is if something would have happened bad, and it's only a matter of time before I felt like it would have, because I've seen personally a child dart right across in front of traffic and almost get hit, then it would have been, why didn't y'all do something?
Something about it.
Why didn't y'all do something about it?
Sure enough.
So it's a dang if you, dang if you don't situation. I stand behind my decision. I stand behind my, uh, my, everything that I've said about it. And another thing is, everybody's like, well, they acted like it was just brought up. No. I've been talking about this since I've been elected to this board. It was one of the first things I brought up. We sat right there at that table with FDOT and had like a workshop slash, uh, discussion about it. Every commissioner, which I know a couple of them were not on, actually, all three of y'all don't think were on the board at that time. Each commissioner from each district sat down with the FDOT representatives to discuss things with the district. A lot of the argument was, well, we need, uh, things in other places, like a red light at Avenue E in ninety-eight, or sixty-five and ninety-eight. We asked them for that, they said no. I've got to book this stick of what requests we made from the county that FDOT, FDOT said no on. So I just want the people to know that that's why that crosswalk is there. I, you know, I, I, again, stand behind my decision, and, uh, it kind of just aggravated me, because this guy was arguing to me about four hundred thousand dollars, which I saw forty thousand dollars, but anyway, nonetheless, it doesn't matter. You can't put a price on a human life. And that's what aggravated me about it. And then him questioning my integrity really, really ticked me off. It takes a lot to tick me off, but when I'm ticked off, don't mess with me, because I'm ticked off. Uh, the varnsmen will come out, just saying. Anyway, that's all I got to say about that.
Well, and, and, uh, and to support what you said, not in those particular words, but to support what you said, we, uh, this board has tried for many years, many a year, to get a crosswalk right there, and they have always denied it. And, uh, so for years, it was like that. We don't, that's the reason why that personally, I did away with my Facebook, because what I've been through the past sixteen months, I don't need the extra strength. And as far as my vote on Facebook page for county commission, we got a website, if you need the information, go to the website. And that's my, that's my.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to make, make a note that, that, uh, I don't know if I should bring this up or not. Um, all, all I can say is, I just, I try to do the best for my community. I feel like I, I, I provide for them. And I listen to everybody, and I try to be as transparent as possible. But what's funny about this, I was discouraged. You can ask my husband, I was, I was just, I wasn't upset, I just was a little, like, you know, I try to do what I feel in my heart's the right thing, and it's never good enough kind of thing. And it's a dang if you do, dang if you don't. And so, you know, he, he was trying to pick me up, and he's my biggest supporter. But the biggest thing at the end of the day is, I felt, I still feel like I did the right thing. But what, what really aggravates me is I try to be as transparent as possible, too, and I, I prayed, I'm a praying person. I prayed to the Lord. I said, give me some, get some kind of sign. Well, the next day, I went back on Facebook, and it literally was a post from a year ago, where I talked about the Hawk Crosswalk and talked about my meeting with the FDOT representatives. So I'm like, there's my sign, and so I posted that, say, this has been discussed for years now. It's like, not like a, oh, this is all of a sudden new thing that I'm throwing out there.
I can sit there.
Anyway, I digress.
That's your phone spying on you.
It'll do that.
Yeah, that's probably true. It's probably true.
But Jessica, I'm gonna tell you something. You always follow your heart. Always follow your heart. And it may, it may crunk you down some, but always follow your heart, because the good Lord's gonna prevail, and that's the way I look at it.
I agree.
And, uh, um.
Don't worry about Facebook. I've had three accounts. I've got on my phone going now.
I don't.
And that's official. But I do have something that I need, I feel like I need to talk to the, the commission about, is, uh, that, that, uh, Abercrombie Boat Ramp. We had, uh, uh, Buster Comey, or Howard, I'm sorry, we're official today, but Howard Buster neighbors called me. And he said that, uh, that he had gotten a complaint from the citizen that there was a bunch of nails and, and stuff that, what, what, I'm not gonna go keep this long. So what happened was that they had pulled a derelict vessel, uh, out of the river, and they used Lombardi, I mean, not Lombardi's, but, uh, Abercrombie Boat Ramp. It was on that left-hand side where we don't have a full, uh, paved, you know? Not as nice as the other side, but regardless, they pulled it up there, um, and they'd used a, a excavator to pull it out. I'm assuming this is part of the, the governor's, uh, derelict vessel program. Um, Howard's pointing out the fact that they didn't come to us and ask permission to pull it out there, because, I mean, it, you know, it's a little different than it being, I mean, it's a public boat ramp. What it boiled down to is, there was, there's a bunch of nails, screws, and stuff like that. Howard went out and taped it off. That way, people, we didn't have people getting flat tires, and there was a lot of debris still there, you know, pieces of plywood where it got broken up. But the biggest issue with me, that's kind of minor. I mean, we can, we can deal with that. I mean, you're not gonna pull a boat out, a sunken boat out, and there's not going to be some part of trash. But the thing that got me is, is if you go out there and ride out there where the excavator had to dig in, now we've got holes in our asphalt. Now, keep in mind, excuse me, I get emotional when we talk about boat ramps. But, uh, anyway, uh, the thing about it is, is, is water's gonna get in there, and it's going to compromise that sand along that area. We're gonna start having asphalt sagging. Uh, it needs to be addressed. Um, um, I'm, I'm all for supporting the governor with the derelict vessel. I mean, if any, if any community, uh, you know, with derelict vessels, we've, we've had our share in this county. I mean, in the past, people just abandoned stuff. I understand that, and I'm, I'm a huge fan of that. But in the same sense, with these contracting companies, they're gonna come in, they need to be mindful when they're, when they're using our resources, and don't leave them in that type of shape, especially whenever we have, uh, potential to have a bigger problem as far as the, uh, uh, asphalt and the, the pavement itself. But I wanted to catch y'all up on that. And to tidy all that up, my father and a couple of his friends was out there that morning letting his dog chase squirrels, and he, he told me, you know, uh, there wasn't any signage on the, the trucks, but there was waste one docksters there. So I called Paige and Mike, or called Paige, she directed me, called office of ladies up front, told me that, gave me the contact information for the contractor and the manager of contractor. I took that, uh, Mr. Morone, so maybe we'll, we'll get a response back from them, see if we can.
Because that pavement's not very old, actually.
No, it's not. It's a brand, it's basically, it's a one of our, I think it is our newest ramp.
But it was two, three pavement.
But I'm just saying, that, that's something that can become a, a huge expense on the county down the road. Uh, especially if you start having some, uh, some issues, uh, integrity issues under that asphalt. Because like I said, all that, all this, you know, all, all that stuff's gonna erode with the, with the water table being that close and all. So this is something we need to be aware of. I feel like y'all need to be aware of, anyway.
Turn, show, I have a question. I know we're Commissioner comments. I don't know that necessarily have to, but shouldn't there be some kind of approval process, or at least us being made aware? That, uh, subcontractors. Want to use our public boat ramp to pull out stuff with, you know what I mean?
That's through FWC.
Yeah, but that, we should be at least made aware of it, I would think.
Yeah, this is the first time I've ever heard of derelict vessel being removed without us knowing about it.
Right.
Um, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but this is the first time I've heard of it.
I know.
I mean, for years and years.
Especially when there's damage.
Various, yeah.
But I, I do know that, that the state, with the governor's office specifically, had passed some, some legislature, I guess, to, to get derelict vessels taken out, because they had moved a bunch of money into FWC's budget for it. And then we, we had the, uh, uh, hurricane that hit down there. What was it, Irma?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that kind of, everything got put on hold as far as going around getting derelict vessels, because they were concentrating all their resources down there, you know, getting vessels out of people's houses. But, uh, now they're backed up, you know, cleaning up there. This, from what I understand, this vessel was actually more or left abandoned or whatever in Gulf County. It's right there by that Salles Creek area, you know, that, the way that river is, it's all, it, I can understand why they came this way. It was the closest, you know, area, but, you know, just like Howard mentioned, you know, we could have directed them to the Mill Pond.
Yeah.
Somewhere where we had the, uh, the, you know, the, the area without tearing up something like that, but. But either way, the vessel's gone. We got some, uh, nails and, and debris out there, which I believe Howard was gonna get a crew on that this morning with that cold weather and that low tide, and try to get cleaned up as best he could. But my biggest concern is the asphalt and the pavement being compromised. That can be a big expense to us down the road, and I just want y'all to be aware of that.
Interesting.
Anyone else?
I've got something.
Go ahead.
It's gonna be Christmas Monday, and I want to wish everybody, first, I want to do this. This is official, from the oldest to the newest. Welcome, Anthony Crum. You have done a good job today.
You have messed up, girl.
Don't put a crosswalk anywhere.
I'm proud of you, and I'm, I'm so, I'm so thankful that I live in Franklin County. But I want to say, we're gonna be celebrating the birth of Christ on Monday. Isn't that something? Isn't that something? And I can tell you, if it hadn't been for my good Lord and Savior up above, this past sixteen months, I couldn't have made, this is gonna be my second year without Oscar. And I was doing some regret, I, I was doing some reflection yesterday. This is what you need to think. And I am so thankful that I can look back on it and think about it with a smile. And I said, you know, all these months, I've been thinking about what I had, what I have lost, because Oscar was actually my life. Anybody that knows me knows he was my life. But now I'm looking at what I do have and what I can celebrate. And although Christmas is sad to me in a way, I'm so happy to be able to be here to cele, celebrate it with the rest of my family that I do have, and know that God's blessings is upon me. And so I want to thank everybody for their prayers and thoughts, for all these board members, because as you see, this job is not easy. This job is not easy at all. But through it all, we do the right thing, we follow our heart, and at the end of the day, we help the people of Franklin County. So I just want to wish, and I'm gonna play to the camera today, which I never do, but I want to thank everybody for everything and wish everybody in Franklin County and who else sees this, a very Merry Christmas, and I hope you're spending it with your family. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've meant to say that, too, and to welcome, uh, Commissioner Crum to the board. Same thing with Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Be safe. I'll be working, so I don't want to see you in the ER, so. Don't get a hoverboard. Don't get a hoverboard. Okay.
No hoverboards for Christmas, Commissioner.
No, because I can't tell you how many times we got, I worked last year Christmas, and there was, everybody that came in had, there was a guy that got a new knife. Uh, we had sliced hand. It was, as long as you're not, you're breathing okay, I'm cool with that, but just be careful. Just, you know, be careful. A lot of broken bones after Christmas.
You ain't gotta worry about me when you get in a hoverboard.
The picture that I got Mr. Morone to put up on the screen.
That's a pretty picture.
Yeah, it's the, uh, the, the recent development we've had in the last two weeks, because we do everything quick around here. Uh, it's the core of engineers coming back. It's the core of engineers coming back to, to correct the channel. And this is not a subcontractor. This is core people. This is the core.
Oh, I'm glad to see them in this box.
So I don't know what all they have, what all it entails, but I know it's not a subcontractor. And I'm assured that we're not going to have substandard work on behalf of the people, the residents of Franklin County. So hopefully by February, it'll all be good.
That's the dredge. That's what I've thought about.
And that's, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that's all the equipment. I think they're still missing, they're still expecting some more equipment in the staging area, I believe.
They are.
I do know, I was coming home from work last night, and that's all I saw. I was like, what is those lights? And it's, yep, the bay, which I'd gotten a call and some text pictures of that, too.
If we had that to begin with, we wouldn't have had no.
We don't have no issue at all. I'll tell you what was a nice thing yesterday, and it was all, just wasn't expecting a guy coming to the store because I work at the auto parts, and I was like, what time do y'all close on Saturdays? I said, "Two." He said, "Do y'all ever do anything on Sunday, like callouts?" I said, "Depends. Who do you work for?" Hey, so I'm here with the core of engineers. I said, "Hold on, let me give you my cell number." I said, "You call me anytime you need to call."
That's a good.
Except for church on Sunday. Anyway, it's going to be good, and we're looking forward to a good outcome. I just think the rest of the commission for doing like Commissioner Ward was talking about earlier, sometimes it's not very encouraging what you're looking at. Sometimes what you're facing isn't good, and what's being said isn't what you want to hear. But you just keep moving, and I'm certain we're looking at a better day. And Commissioner Crum, don't worry. It's just getting started. But welcome. You're welcome to hear. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
From staff, Commissioner Crum, we want to make sure of one thing. It's myself, Courtney, even Aaron, well, she's not here. You going to be back on the second? Did we scare you?
You coming back?
You coming back?
It's going to be.
Alex knew.
He's going to fit in fine.
Good answer.
He's going to be calling Governor DeSantis tonight.
He's just fine. Good answer. That's a better Commissioner Ainsen. Sure enough.
Anything else for adjourned?
My humble.
Me and adjourned.